I am calling the October 8, 2024 Meeting of the Board of Education Order per Government Code Section 54950, Executor and Education Code Section 35140, Executor at 5:02 PM. We will now be adjourned to closed session for the purpose of discussing the following matters: Personnel Matters, Public Employee Appointments, Employment Pursuant to Government Code 54957, Conference with Labor Negotiators, Dr. Alex Churness Superintendent, Gary Stein, Assistant Superintendent of Administrative Services, Dr. Isaac Gates Deputy Superintendent of Human Resources. In these discussions, we will be having CSEA, APLD, and Plum. We will also be discussing student expulsions or disciplinary matters in accordance with Board Bylaw 9322.3, Case Number 2501, Adam 1, and also Claims, General Liability Claim Number 642193. Is there anyone present who would like to address any of these items? Seeing none, we will adjourn to closed session at 5:03 PM. Hello, everyone. We are reconvening to regular session at 6 o'clock PM. Our report out of closed session is that the Board met and voted to approve Student Expulsion Case Number 2501, Adam 1, in accordance with Board Bylaw 9322.3 as amended. We had a motion by Mrs. Anderson, we had a second by Mr. Frazier, and the motion carried 5-0. I'm now going to ask Tressney Anderson to lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance.
You all can stand. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you.
Okay, and so just a little housekeeping. Our live streaming, you guys are lucky you came, our live stream is not working right now, but however, we are recording this meeting and it will be posted to the website for viewing probably tomorrow. Our TVs outside are picking up and they are able to view it outside. I need a roll call for our Board members showing all's present. All's present. Luke?
Present.
Carrie?
Here.
Marilyn?
Here.
Sean?
Here.
Todd?
Here.
And I am here. Show all members present, including our student board member. I need an approval for the agenda, please.
I'll make a motion to approve the October 8, 2024 Board of Agenda as presented.
I second.
I have a motion by Mrs. Anderson, I have a second by Mr. Youngblood. Is there any comments? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Motion carries 5-0 with an aye from our student board member. I need a motion to approve the minutes, please.
I'll make a motion to approve the minutes of the regular meeting of September 10, 2024 as presented.
Second.
I have a motion by Mr. Youngblood and I have a second by Mrs. Buck. Any comments? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
I have vote of 5-0 and one from our student board member. Motion carries 5-0. And now, what we've all been waiting for. I'm going to turn it over to Dr. Churness for the 2024 PYLUSD State of the District Presentation.
Thank you, President Blades, members of the Board. Yeah, we can clap. Yes. First off, as many of you know, I've been out with some health issues and I wanted to just take a moment to thank everyone that's reached out to me. Every board member reached out to me, so many teachers and staff, and it was much appreciated. I want to thank Dr. Gates for running the last board meeting and my wonderful cabinet for keeping things moving and of course, all of our amazing administrators and principals. One of the things while I was home that kind of bummed me out was that we had a State of the District event planned and we had one, as you know, last year and so we had to postpone this one. And so that was hard because we accomplished so much as a district and we had so many people work so hard and we really wanted to honor our students and our staff for all of our amazing accomplishments. So I remember driving to work, I think it was my first day back to work, and I called Dr. Young and I said, "I have an idea." And usually when I say that to them, they're like, "Uh-oh, what's going on now? What are we doing?" Because I'm more of an idea person and I've talked about there's the dreamers and the doers and the most talented people have qualities of both. Dr. Young has qualities of both. I'm more on the dreamer side. I need doers to get some of the ideas done and so one of my ideas was to create an interactive State of the District presentation that really encompasses everything we have to offer, all in one document, something we can push out to the entire community. And so I actually showed this to some superintendents. I had a meeting last week and everyone was like, well, half of them said, "We want to copy this." The other half said, "We want to steal your employee that built this." And so that employs Laura Lee, so let's give her a hand here. She works. So without further ado, this is our 2024 State of the District Presentation. As you can see, the cover itself says it all. For the first time in over eight years, we're actually making a turnaround in enrollment and that's good for everybody. It means we're not laying off staff, we're not cutting programs, we're actually getting more revenue into our district so we can pay our employees more and run the amazing programs we have. Okay? So you've probably already seen the video. This was the Welcome Back video that we put together, so we'll, and sort of a table of contents. Next slide. So this is really cool. Obviously, we have great award-winning schools. We have some of the best in the county and our district is well-known and that's why enrollment's going up because people move here for our schools. What Laura Lee put together in her infinite wisdom was an interactive map of all of our schools and their feeder programs. And Jeremy, if you can go ahead and show the community, you can click on any one of these logos and everything you need to know, the school's website pops up. So it's really cool. You can see where all our schools feed into and in one place, you can access any one of our schools. Next slide. Again, you can also access all of our alternative schools. So we have our Virtual Academy, we have Parkview, George Key, El Camino, Venture. And so again, you want to go ahead and show them how you can access. There it is. It also makes a really cool sound when you switch the page, as you can tell. So the next slide's just a brief kind of overview of our demographics for the school district and what this really shows is how diverse we are. We have 40, over half of our district are socio-economically disadvantaged and we have a diverse community of English learners, of all different ethnicities. Next slide. I want to take a moment to thank our community partners. I know we have Twee here, we have our PTA Council President here. Where's Twee? Please stand. I'm going to put you on the spot. We have our fabulous Placentia PD here, making sure everyone's safe over here by the door. We have Anaheim PD here, Sergeant Coglin is here and we're going to speak about his partnership later. We have city officials here. We have a lot of people that make up such a wonderful district of five cities. So I know many people would think from the outside, Placentia, Yorba Linda is two big cities, but it's really five. And so we have schools and community members in Fullerton as well, in Brea as well, and in Anaheim. And we have an amazing school board that really wants what's best for students. So, next slide. At this time, I'm going to turn it over to Mr. Gary Stein, our Assistant Superintendent of Business, to give a high-level overview of our finances and also talk about, a little bit about where our money goes and where our priorities are.
Thank you very much. As you can see on the first slide, this is an overview of the district's projected revenue for the current school year. As you can also see, the majority of our money comes from the Local Control Funding Formula, or LCFF, to the tune of 70, over 76%. The rest of the funding comes from other state, federal, and local revenue, but the vast majority comes from that funding formula. These figures were presented as part of our budget in July, which projected a 400-student decline in enrollment. And as of Census Day last week, we were projected to exceed our projections by roughly 420 students. So these numbers don't reflect the added revenue from those students that you'll see in December when we bring our budget back. Yeah, it is good news, very good news. What I wanted to do right now is to thank my fiscal team, so Fong Tran, if you're out there. If you wouldn't mind standing so we can give her a hand. She manages our budget. Thank you for all your work, stellar work managing it. Very appreciative of your work. Thank you, Fong. And on the next slide, what you see is, so of that money, what we wanted to help show is that the district invests 63.3% of the overall budget into the LCAP, so our Local Control and Accountability Plan, which is aimed at increasing the performance for all of our students and especially those who need additional support. So $247 million in actions are in the LCAP. Part of this, or big part of this, is the $26 million in funding allocated to the district to specifically increase services for English learners, socio-economically disadvantaged students, and foster youth students. And so we have that number displayed and we're very proud of that, that we focus our money on delivering services to those students. And we have a large team that actually helps with the LCAP and all of the finances associated with that. So Ms. Evelyn Tablas, I just wanted to call you out and say thank you to you and for all your work you do with the LCAP. Thank you.
Okay. And the next pages contain our accountability plans as mentioned by Mr. Stein, beginning with our district's Local Control Accountability Plan, which sets our three-year vision and LCFF budget for the district, as well as our school plans for student achievement, which set the annual vision and budget for each school, and finally, our school accountability report cards. So all of these accountability plans are available on our district website and links are also provided in this report.
Jeremy, can you just show the, where those links will take us?
And closing out our general information section, we have our current school year calendar, which is just a valuable resource for our parents to have at their fingertips as they plan ahead for the year.
So enrollment, we're going to talk a little bit about how we got here in detail around innovation, around building preschools. There's new development in the city, but I will tell you, in just talking to all of our neighboring districts, nobody's increasing right now. There's very few districts in Orange County that are actually increasing enrollment. We're now, California, we're now up to 75% of districts in California are in decline and for the first time in over 100 years, California population has gone down year over year. That was starting last year. So we are bucking a trend, which is critically important because losing enrollment is a downward spiral. You start losing kids, then you have to reduce jobs, you have to reduce programs, and ultimately reduce schools. So we don't want to go there. If you just look at our district, 2019 versus this year, we were operating with about $40 million more dollars a year in 2019 with those 3,000 more students than we have now. So it is critically important, can't stress it enough, and so many of our actions we take is to actually buck this trend. So this is huge news. We hope it continues and it's a pattern and what we hear from so many people is we move here for the schools and so they're excited about what's going on here, which is great.
Thank you. So the next page displays exactly that, the reason why so many families want to come to our district and that is because of our award-winning schools and our amazing educators. As you can see, we have a picture of the California School Dashboard, which is intended to provide parents and districts with meaningful information about how districts are performing and really enhancing student learning. Our student achievement is measured on the Smarter Balance Assessment as well as our LPAC assessments and the dashboard also reports other indicators such as chronic absenteeism, suspensions, and college and career readiness. As you can see on the screen, but also at the links provided, our district continues to perform strongly as a district and we have made significant strides in each of these areas this past year. So we look forward to the release of the new dashboard results in this coming month. Go ahead, Jeremy. I'm proud to share that through our rededication to our professional learning communities where our staff are using data to drive their instruction and intervention, as well as our targeted efforts in increasing math fluency and conceptual understanding this past year, we were able to increase the overall percentage of all students meeting or exceeding grade level standards in mathematics by nearly 2.5%. Most notably, our socio-economically disadvantaged students increased their performance by nearly 6.5%. So that deserves a huge round of applause for all of our schools. We will be maintaining these efforts this school year in mathematics, but we'll also be expanding our focus to include English Language Arts as well, where you can see we had smaller gains, but about half a percent in English Language Arts, but still significant gains in our socio-economically disadvantaged students by nearly 3.5%. At this time, I'm going to acknowledge a few standout schools whose principals are here with us today, beginning with Lisa Carmona, Principal of Ruby Drive Elementary, if you Ruby Drive is our avid showcase school and their school increased their English Language Arts student achievement results by 7% and math results by nearly 9%. That is unbelievable. Lisa shared that Ruby Drive achieved their remarkable academic gains through rigorous instruction in alignment with Avid, targeted interventions, focusing on both academics and wellness, and a strong commitment to teacher collaboration to promote student success. Congratulations to the Cougars and thank you, Principal Carmona and your teachers. We also have with us tonight Kelly Farrell, Principal of Morse Elementary. Kelly attributes their success to her nurturing staff who focused on purposeful lessons, continuous data review, and strategic instructional groupings. By empowering students with goal setting, staff have helped students work diligently toward achieving their goals and increased their language arts scores by about 5% and their math scores by about 7.5%. Impressively, the Morse Wildcats have now surpassed their student achievement levels from before the COVID-19 pandemic. Way to go, Cougars. Now finally, for elementary, we have Kristen McDonald here with us tonight, Principal of Golden Elementary. Principal McDonald shared that the Golden staff continues to provide rigor with support to ensure that every student gets what they need to succeed at her school, yielding over 90% of the Golden students consistently meeting or exceeding grade level standards in language arts and mathematics. But they're not satisfied with that consistent, strong performance. They had a gain of nearly 4% in mathematics this past year. There are few schools in the state who can match this level of student achievement and success. Impressively, the Golden Eagles have now surpassed their student achievement levels from before the COVID pandemic as well. In secondary, I would like to acknowledge the work of Toffrey Middle School, whose current principal, Sarah Barton, and former principal, Dave Okamoto, are here with us tonight. Sarah shared that the Toffrey staff took a deeper dive into assessment data than ever before and came out with a renewed focus on student achievement. This resulted in an increase in their language arts achievement by almost 8% and math achievement by almost 9%. The school is in the process of renewing their Schools to Watch status, which recognizes middle schools that demonstrate academic excellence, strong leadership, and a commitment to helping all students succeed. Excellent work, Falcons. Lastly, we have Paige Still, Principal of Yorba Linda Middle here tonight. Paige shared that her staff focused on the school-wide alignment of instructional practices and data-driven support and intervention in order to increase their student achievement in language arts by nearly 7% and math by nearly 6%. In fact, they are now pursuing the designation of being named a PLC Model School, as well as also renewing their status as a Schools to Watch. Way to go, Bobcats. While I highlighted about five schools this evening, we are incredibly proud of all of our schools and thankful to our hard-working teachers and administrators who work tirelessly to deliver first-best instruction to our students and meet their individual needs throughout the school year through differentiation and targeted support. So again, thank you to all of our staff for all your hard work for our students. Now, in the realm of college and career readiness, we're proud to share that the class of 2024 had a 95.4% graduation rate and a large number of graduated seniors earned the Golden State Seal of Merit Diploma, the State Seal of Bilitracy, and the State Seal of Civic Engagement. We are proud that over 500 more students challenged themselves with rigorous coursework and took the AP exams last year with an astounding district pass rate of 88.4%. In fact, three out of four of our high schools were named AP Honor Roll Schools for their outstanding work to welcome more students into AP courses. We're proud to continue to offer a variety of college-level courses to our high school students, inclusive of AP, IB, and Cambridge, and are not eliminating or reducing these programs, but in fact, expanding them. We also increased our A-to-G rate by 2.2% this past year and increased our CTE pathway completion rate by 4.2%. Oh, that's fine, let's clap for it. I'd like to acknowledge Dr. Will Gray, our Executive Director of College and Career Readiness, as well as Mike Young, our Director of Secondary Education, for their continued efforts in ensuring that our students are graduating from our high schools ready for success for their future endeavors. Last year, we launched our Targeted Intervention Program, where over 2,000 students were able to receive targeted support in mathematics either before, during, or after school. And I'm proud to share that we are continuing to offer this program to all of our schools this year, much in part due to our partnership through ELOP and Dr. George Lopez. Thank you. And we will expand to cover language arts as well as mathematics. I would like to acknowledge Assistant Director Dr. Taylor Holloway for her dedication in launching this program last year, as well as, as well as Dr. Gray again, for carrying it forward this year. This past year, we also invested heavily in early childhood education by opening two new fee-based preschools at Wagner and Bryant Ranch. As you can see, by the end of this year, we will have gone from one fee-based preschool to six fee-based preschools in order to serve our youngest learners in the community. I would like to acknowledge Dr. George Lopez, Executive Director of Early and Expanded Learning, Sylvia Questa, our Early Childhood Education Director, as well as Ralph Figueroa, Director of Maintenance and Facilities, and all of their teams for all the hard work that they poured into opening our new preschools. Additionally, we are proud to share that we launched an inclusion model at Wagner Preschool this year and we will expand further this year into our new preschools. At this time, I'm going to cede the mic to Renee Gray, who's going to share more about our inclusion efforts.
Okay, thank you very much. We are excited to share important updates on our inclusive preschool programs that were actually established after the Board approved an inclusion resolution back in May of 2022. And the resolution that was approved at that time reflects the Board's commitment to inclusive practices for all of our students in special education and we're very happy about that. So I'd like to acknowledge first, before I talk about our inclusion, is Jamie Nash, who is our Administrator of Preschool in Special Education. And then Sylvia Questa, again, who works so closely with her, our, again, Early Childhood Education Director. These two have what I call a symbiotic relationship. I have never seen such a great pairing where we have done such incredible things for our preschool students and it's really attributed to you and your wonderful team. The Expanded, Early Learning, and Special Education Departments have been working very closely together to provide inclusive preschool programs for our students. And we have co-taught models at various school sites and we have our Early Intervention Speech and Language Services that are available now at multiple locations, allowing children with IEPs to receive their services at the same site as their preschool program, rather than traveling. Yes, that's something to, yes. And additionally, inclusion is present across all grade levels at every elementary, middle, and high school. Our students with IEPs have increased opportunities for instruction in the general education setting. Alrighty, this is my favorite part, I have to say. So we have two programs that we are so profoundly proud of in our district and I'd like to first acknowledge the individuals associated with these programs. Rebecca Allen, who would please stand, she is our Principal of George Key and Venture Academy.
Yay.
So this has been a labor of love, both of these programs. We have...
Can I say a quick word before we get here? We're the largest employer in this area and when I got here, I went to our Venture Program, which is our 18 to 22s and we're sending these kids to amazing places to work, Trader Joe's, the library, Placentia Library, all over. But the one place we weren't sending our kids is back here. And so the goal of this, the PLUS Program, which Renee will talk about, is actually to employ our kids because that's good for everybody. It's good for our general ed kids, it's good for our special ed kids, it's good for diversity within our schools. So it's something that we're very proud of and we have some special guests here today that Renee's going to speak to.
Absolutely, thank you. So the three students that are part of this program, if you would please stand, first is Anna Yelly Jimenez. Second is Tommy McTeer. And third is Bryant Nguyen. So these students are our first PLUS representatives and PLUS stands for Placentia, Linda, Upward Success. And through this program, we provide opportunities, as Dr. Churness said, for our students to obtain paid employment and we call it our School-to-Work Program. And they are, again, they get to work in the print shop, nutrition services, maintenance, activities, and special education. So Anna Yelly is working currently as an aide at George Key and Tommy McTeer is starting as an aide for us as well. And Bryant Nguyen is just beginning as an Assistant Equipment Manager at Toffrey Middle School with the Color Guard. And I'd just like to acknowledge all of the staff at George Key and Venture that work so hard with our students and believe in them and have true collective teacher efficacy, if you will. You believe in all your students' ability to reach for the stars and they're proving it here tonight, so thank you. Our Advanced Program is our diploma-bound program and this program serves as a bridge to help advance our special education students that are placed in our Venture Academy Adult Transition Program, who have nearly met graduation requirements but just need a little bit more to obtain their high school diploma. And so I'm so proud, again, to introduce our students who just graduated with a high school diploma from Advance last year. So our first one is Dennis Conant. And he now works with Goodwill on job placement and is learning to use OC access to get to work each day. And Daniel Villarue is not here today. because he's actually in school, which is great. And he's now in our North Orange County Continuing Education Program. He is taking classes in money management, social skills, and intro to tech and computers. So maybe he'll come back to work with us in our tech department, right, Jeremy? Okay, and then he also enjoys going to NOCE and wants to complete different pathways, too. He's very driven. And then we have Thomas Cornelius, who has joined us this evening as well. And Thomas is checking out colleges right now, and he has a job coach who is looking into different opportunities for him based on his interests.
Now, in the area of athletics, I would like to begin by acknowledging Sarah Barton, our Middle School Athletics Coordinator. She does it all, folks. For her vision and dedication to creating an authentic athletic experience for our middle schoolers with practices, scrimmages, and culminating events. As well as, of course, Dr. Taylor Holloway for her support and supervision of all of our secondary athletic programs. Through the addition of our fifth sport of wrestling this past year, nearly 700 students were able to be exposed to the sport. It is undoubtable that students will never forget the experience that they had in middle school athletics. Volleyball is currently underway. We had our second round of scrimmages just today. And new this year, we'll be adding in flag football. So thank you again to Sarah Barton and your team of wonderful people who are helping you pull off middle school athletics. Now, in the area of arts, I would like to acknowledge Phil Mortensen, our Visual and Performing Arts Coordinator, for his longstanding dedication and support of our Visual and Performing Arts Programs across the district. Through all the increased funding that we received this year and his hard work, in conjunction with Evelyn Tablas and our Fiscal Department, we were able to expand vocal music to students in all elementary grades, as well as hire visual arts teachers to ensure that all elementary students receive standards-based art instruction. He has also supported our secondary schools in adding personnel and equipment for their Visual and Performing Arts Programs. So thank you once again to Phil and your amazing Visual and Performing Arts Teachers across the district for providing these wonderful experiences to our students. In the area of activities, I would like to acknowledge Dr. Liz Leon, as well as our elementary principals for working hard to ensure that all students who are exiting elementary school were able to participate in this culminating activity of attending overnight camp, whether through outdoor science school or otherwise. Through the use of our one-time funds, seven new elementary schools participated this past year, and we were able to provide over $200,000 in scholarships for students to ensure that they were able to have this experience. Thank you again to our principals. And communication is key to an engaged partnership, and this past year, we enhanced our communication efforts through our Superintendents' Monday Messages, as well as expanded community advisory opportunities and an increased social media presence. If you're not following us, be sure to. I would like to acknowledge our Public and Media Relations Specialist, Laura Lee Mesa, for all her invaluable work in this important area.
Alrighty. Actually, due to the rising fentanyl crisis, we have a desire to empower students and families and really provide resources and education in this area. We actually provided 17 awareness assemblies this year, last year, and trained 329 staff district-wide and added 334 units of Narcan to every site. And I really want to acknowledge Michelle DeHaven, our Administrator of Health Services, and Amy Kleiner, one of our nurses. And of course, Placentia PD, and right now, representing Placentia PD is Officer Young and Officer Cleveland, who work so closely with Chief Brad Butts from Placentia PD. And together, I know that you had an officer working with you as well, Michelle, to provide those services. So it was a real collaborative effort with Placentia PD to achieve this goal. The number of students exposed to these programs in both middle and high school totaled 13,031. Additionally, we offered two English and one Spanish district-wide fentanyl awareness program in conjunction with Placentia PD. And so, for those of you who are not able to actually go to these or view them, they're still on our YouTube channel, and you can view them in English and Spanish. And also, we have increased safety and security in our district, and we are very proud to have Sergeant Bob Conklin and Officer Shetty Skeet here with us this evening. This past year... Sorry about that. This past year, we actually added Officer Shetty Skeet to our already outstanding SRO team in the district, so that each high school now has an SRO on campus. Yeah, I think that deserves a hand. We are so fortunate to have such a positive relationship with our law enforcement agencies to ensure safety on our campus. And our goal is to make sure that we help build positive relationships between our students and law enforcement. So we think that that's happening, and we're very thankful for it. Okay, thank you.
Well, I will start with the top-left picture there, because it's incredible. Last night, we had the opportunity to do a ribbon-cutting at El Dorado High School, where we installed lights. The school was established in 1966, and we've never had lights on the field. And when I got here, one of the things I did was I met with every principal, and I went through a needs assessment. And one of the needs, clearly, that I heard from many parents and kids was the need for lights at El Dorado High School, so they could practice there. They didn't have to go to other sites for that. And so, I'm happy to report that it was not easy, but we did it, and we got it done, and we did it because it's best for kids. So, I know that many, many, many students will benefit from this moving forward.
Thank you. Over the summer, I'm sure that if you've been driving around the community, you would have seen our Maintenance and Facilities Teams at all of our sites from one point or another. We've been very, very busy with roofing projects, air conditioning projects, asphalting, everything you can imagine we've been doing, as well as replacing every ceiling tile throughout the district. So your kids, when they came back to school this year, it came back to nice, clean ceilings, which is fantastic. So, as you know, we talked about the lights, which we're excited about. We've also done some major renovations at Valencia, El Dorado, and Esperanza Gyms to add air conditioning. So now, all of our gyms at the high schools have air conditioning, so our students can... That is good news. We've also completed the Esperanza High School Theater, which, there's a picture there. It's a beautiful theater with lots of new technology, so encourage you to see that. I want to thank Mr. Ralph Figaroa, again, from our Maintenance and Facilities Team, and all of his team, right, for all the great work. Really made it so that our students can come back to a beautiful and safe environment to learn in. We're also, as you can see down the lower right, we're moving more and more towards electric buses. Our Transportation Director, Mr. Richard Jimenez, who's joining us tonight. One of the most innovative and creative people. Chases after every single grant you can find to try to replace our fleet, including some free electric buses that we got through a grant with the Air Quality Management District, AQMD. So that's some great news there. Along with that, we need to obviously increase our capacity to charge the buses, specifically fast-charging stations, because they take a while. So we are working with that. So he's been working with Maintenance and Facilities in Edison to bring that facilities into our yard, in our transportation yard, so we can charge our growing electric fleet. And before you ask, no, you cannot charge your Tesla in the parking lot. But thank you very much, Richard, and the team.
All right. So, as I mentioned, one of the things, when I got here about a year and a half ago, was I met with all the principals and talked about kind of what they thought our district needed. We also had a State of the District Report presentation, and one of the things I talked about in this presentation was the need to prepare students for the future, and specifically, to prepare students for jobs that don't exist yet and technologies that have yet to be invented. And that's very hard to do. But in talking with Dr. Beth Fisher, it became very clear to me right away that she wanted this for her students. She wanted to take a very, very good school and make it great, and she wanted to prepare her students for the future and not just the current world. So as we talked more and more, it became clear that preparing all kids in the area of computer science was missing in public education. Many schools, including our own, have outstanding computer science programs and pathways, but only a small subset of the student body is receiving this education. So Dr. Fisher decided to build a school where all kids get the skills for the next half-century and are prepared for jobs that have yet to be invented. So with that, we have the Orange County School of Computer Science. We had enrollment increased by over 200 students, and we have a video prepared for you. Now...
Good evening, everybody. I am Sparky. I am part of the Innovation Lab at the Orange County School of Computer Sciences. It is my pleasure to introduce you to some of our wonderful students and what they are doing at OCSCS.
Hello, Sparky. Mi nombre es Lily. Estoy en la casa de señor Paolo Piana. Tener algo como el laboratorio de innovación en mi escuela es tan genial que realmente me hace aprender más mi cosa favorita en el laboratorio de la impresión 3D.
Hey, everyone. We're UCL 3AO Productions.
We have so much amazing equipment in the Innovation Lab that students are able to use, such as 3D printers, laser cutters, embroidery machines, professional audio-recording equipment, and vacuum formers. We can't wait to show you some of the amazing projects students will be working on throughout the year. Make sure to follow us on social media and keep a lookout for the upcoming YouTube channel, where events and news happening in the school will be posted. Well, everybody, that's it for now. Thank you for your time, and I hope you all have a wonderful night.
At this time, I'd like everyone associated with the Orange County School of Computer Sciences to please stand. Included standing are our parent board members. Thank you all for being here, and we can't wait to see what the future holds for our kids. We thought about bringing Sparky here, but it was a little tricky, so... But the kids are programming Sparky, and it's called animatronics, and it's unbelievable. So, going back to enrollment, why we innovate? That's a great... This is a reason why we innovate. We also are happy to report that in less than six months, we opened the Universal Sports Institute, also located at the OCSCS campus. And I'd like Dr. Taylor Holloway and Dominique Paulchild to please stand, Parkview and USI. So this was no small task. When we opened, I'd say maybe 95% of the people were hoping this worked out. 25% probably loved the idea and hoped it worked out. 25% probably didn't love the idea, but hoped it worked out. And the rest in the middle weren't sure, but they hoped it worked out. And I think that that's something we should all remember. Everyone in here, in this room tonight, has one thing in common, and that's that we all want what's best for students. We may go at it different ways, but we all want what's best for students. And the idea of the Universal Sports Institute actually came from a teacher in PYL who's reached out to myself and Leandra and talked about losing kids to a local charter school where kids can compete and do their online work. And so, in looking at our programs and looking at our amazing Parkview homeschool, we thought, well, what if we created our own homeschool program where we can have kids compete and train and not only serve our students, but attract students from other districts as well? So, we invested 1.2 million initially, using not our general fund, but using our developer fees, which is about 0.03% of our total budget on building the program. And we have seen, just in six months, from zero to now, we have so many kids engaged in this program, and I'm going to speak to that in a little bit. We're looking at ongoing revenues of almost $2 million of new revenues, where staffing costs are a little over $1 million. So, I know there's some misinformation out there about this, and we'll get into the details in a moment, but I want you to know that the Board received some feedback from parents, parent surveys, on their experiences in this program, and it's just unbelievable. And I've had really good conversations with so many people that some love it, some don't, but they want it to work. And so, and I appreciate those conversations, and I think what I'm going to share with you next can alleviate some of the concerns some people may have. Next slide. So with USI, we decided to utilize all our facilities in the district. And so, kids have a central hub for training, and that's at the OCS site. But they use all different sites. So instead of our original intent, which was to put it in one facility, which is currently the PDA, we decided, let's save our money and utilize facilities we already have. The other thing is that we've heard, "Well, you know, not sure if this is a good investment for just 100 kids." Well, we're budgeting, hopefully, we're projecting 150 kids. Well, we're budgeting, hopefully, we're projecting 150 kids, but what's happened in just the last several months is we've expanded this to literally hundreds and hundreds of kids. Just yesterday, we opened Speed and Agility Courses for kids throughout the district, and we sold out our classes. We're going to serve over 400 kids throughout the district in before-school Speed and Agility Courses. We had 60 kids yesterday from throughout the district show up in the morning before school for Speed and Agility Courses. We're concurrently enrolling over 80 kids from our OCSCS school at USI. We have over 40 special needs kids that we're serving through our partner with BC Adaptive Fitness. And again, hopefully, our full-time USI enrollment, we're looking at upwards of 150 to 200 kids. So we just started. We're already serving hundreds of kids in our district, and it wouldn't happen without Dr. Holloway and the staff that works day and night to providing this innovative program that really is the envy of so many districts. We have districts now trying to emulate it. We have other districts asking, you know, Dr. Holloway's being asked all the time about how we do it and what we're doing. We're offering first-class, the highest technology you can imagine, and it's free to kids that otherwise would not be able to afford this program. So I can't speak enough about it. We had, just two weeks ago, the top sports agent in the world, Lee Steinberg, he's an agent for Pat Mahomes, for you name it, shows up at USI. We've had two Olympians show up at USI. We've had, one of our instructors is an Olympian. So it's been a wonderful new program, and it's really turned into a real jewel for our district. And the fact that we're expanding this now to hundreds of kids throughout the district is really a game changer. So with that, next slide? Oh, yeah. I thought that was... Okay. Yeah, go ahead.
Jeremy, if we could go back to the video.
So education has changed. It used to be kids come to you, and you, as a student, you have to conform to the school you go to. We flipped that model. Now, our school conforms to our kids and what they need. And what USI is, is an academic and athletic institute where we take kids and provide them with skills and technology that otherwise nobody could afford. And we do it for every kid that wants to be part of this program.
I'm excited for our students in Orange County to have the opportunity to actually be able to be a part of an amazing program like this. As I look around, it's great to see so many wonderful parents and supporters of the community that believe that we do need to take a holistic approach when educating our students. We need to take an approach where academics is important, but so for many of these students, also athletics is important.
This institute is important because it's going to provide kids the actual correct, safe, healthiest, and best means of taking care of their body, their mind, just everything. And so as someone that grew up without it, there's so many things that can happen or can go wrong that could be the detriment to someone's career when it didn't need to be. So for these kids, they're really going to be a reflection of how things will go right when it's done right.
We're really excited to be working with Placencia Yorba Linda School District to see what's happening with their students in sports and academics. And this work here at the Universal Sports Institute perfectly blends those academics and athletic achievements. This is a one-stop shop for kids in sports, but also to make sure that they've got a clear pathway to college and career readiness and success, which is our key goal at the Orange County Department of Education. It's our mission. And so we partner with Placencia Yorba Linda to make sure that the students here are successful, and we're so excited to support this work.
Something that we're incredibly proud of in our district are all the personalized learning experiences that we provide to all of our students, where they gain an advantage in future-ready career technical education pathways and academies at each high school and are leaving our schools prepared for high-wage, high-skill jobs through the real-world skills and the industry-specific experience gained here. At El Camino, we offer a printing, imaging, and design pathway. At Eldorado, we offer the Digital Media Arts Academy as well as the ED Law Academy. At Esperanza, we offer the Aztec Engineering and Manufacturing Academy as well as the Medical Sciences Academy. At Valencia, we offer the International Baccalaureate Diploma Program, the Cambridge ACE Diploma Program, as well as the Valtech Diploma Program. At Yorba Linda, we offer the Mustang Business Academy with pathways in culinary arts as well as business management. So I would like to take a moment to acknowledge Dr. Will Gray for his support of our CTE programs in partnership with North Orange County ROP. We remain committed to innovation and are currently in the process of bringing additional innovative new experiences and programs to our district, inclusive of STEAM, computer science, and digital media arts at our elementary and middle schools. We are also bringing the IB Primary Years Program and the IB Middle Years Program to feed into our IB Diploma Program, so be on the lookout for that in the coming years. As we look forward, we are continuing to invest in early childhood education and have received a grant for the expansion of our state preschools, with three preschools opening later this fall at Glenview, Morse, and Tines Elementarys. These schools will be the first in the county to utilize a blended preschool model, where state preschool, inclusion preschool, and fee-based preschool programs will run together at each site. I would like to once again acknowledge Dr. George Lopez and Sylvia Questa for their innovation and dedication to these programs. This year, we are also piloting an extended-day transitional kindergarten program across 10 elementary schools in order to provide additional instruction and enrichment to our five-year-olds across the district. I would like to thank Dr. Liz Leon and our pilot school principals for their efforts in this pilot. For our academic focus this year, I shared earlier, we are working on improving our students' writing and literacy skills, as reading and writing are crucial to forming an educational foundation that enables students to access and process information effectively, develop the critical thinking skills that they need to be successful, and express their ideas clearly so that they can ultimately learn across all subjects. So to support this joint family school effort, we're providing training to our elementary school teachers on the building blocks of literacy, but additionally, we have launched Storytime with PYLUSD on our district YouTube channel, and I know one of our featured principals is here and is mortified right now. Every other week, we release reading videos of our school and our district leaders, and so we hope that you can check it out at our YouTube channel and social media. I would once again like to acknowledge Dr. Liz Leon for leading our literacy efforts, and Lorelai Mesa for their work supporting this initiative. As you can see by the data, our English learners remain our district-wide student group of focus. So to continue to support our English learners, we will follow our English learner master plan, which was board-approved last year, and invest significant resources toward professional development in GLAD strategies, otherwise known as Guided Language Acquisition Design this year. We are also ensuring that all teachers and administrators receive training on the California English Learner Roadmap, as well as providing scaffolds to better support the English language development of our students. I would love to acknowledge Jose Cabrera, Assistant Director of Federal Programs. He and our ELD, Tosse Blanca Gibbons, have been dedicated to providing this training to every single teacher and school across the district. So truly, they are taking this completely on their shoulders to ensure that every single educator in our district knows who their English learners are and how best to support them. So thank you for that, Jose. A joint Educational Services and Student Support Services initiative this year is increasing our community engagement and pathways to parent partnerships, which are designed to equip families with the tools and knowledge they need to support their children's success at every stage. We offer a variety of tailored workshops intended to not only strengthen the parenting skills but also foster a deeper connection between home and school, which create a supportive environment for students. Together, we're building stronger family-school partnerships. And as you can see on the screen, as well as through the link on the website, we are offering many different programs and classes to our families at various sites throughout the district. And so I would like to again acknowledge Jose Cabrera, our Assistant Director of Federal Programs, in partnership with Dr. Baldwin Pedraza, Director of Student Services, for their collaboration on this initiative. And now, I'll turn it back over to Renee, who will share more on this topic.
And actually, Jose Cabrera and Dr. Baldwin Pedraza could stay standing, because I'm going to acknowledge them in this next part. So, yeah. They, again, are working together, as Dr. Young described, our departments are collaborating on this effort. And in addition to the parent workshops that were just mentioned here, we plan to survey our families to identify the topics and issues most important to them and the areas in our district that matter most and what our certain communities in our district need as well. So from there, we will plan and deliver these trainings within our own communities. The goal actually is to not have our students come to us but have us go to them, and to just piggyback off of what Dr. Churnus said in the video about our job not being to have our students conform to us but we conform to them. That's what we're going to be doing with our parent and community engagement. Surveys will help us with that, and we'll make sure that we keep our hand on the pulse of our community and offer what is necessary and what's needed. And then for our wellness coordination, I'm sorry, the wellness coordination, I'd like to recognize Jamie Schill, our Assistant Director of Special Education, and then Tanya Gordillo, our Administrator of Student Services, and then Eunice Castaños, our Coordinator of Student Services. So this past year, the merging of Student Services and Special Education into one unified division, Student Support Services, represents, I think, the beauty and the power of collaboration in our district. We brought these two departments together, and we've been working together to foster a holistic approach to student success, ensuring that every learner, despite what their needs are, are getting their needs met. And so I really want to acknowledge their two directors in that department. Number one is Gwen Redira, who could not be here this evening, but I do want to acknowledge her. She leads our team, and this Special Education team works tirelessly, I have to say, each day to ensure that our children in Special Education receive what they need and they have opportunities given to them. And we work so closely with our principals, who are so inclusive, many of who are here today, tonight with us. And we just feel like our department and our Special Education Department is really second to none. And so I just thank this team for believing in all kids and for their commitment. So in terms of what we plan to do for the well-being of our students in the future is, we currently have a variety of wellness providers in our district: school counselors, school psychologists, wellness specialists, mental health clinicians. And all of these people work in conjunction with each other to ensure that our students' social, emotional, and behavioral needs are being met. Each of these groups of individuals is crucial in creating a more effective and holistic approach to student well-being. In the spring of 2025, our plan is actually to host a Wellness and Resource Fair under Dr. Baldwin Pedraza's leadership, and we will be leveraging partnerships with community agencies to provide student and parent workshops and community resources in support of the ever-changing social and emotional and behavioral needs of our community. So we're excited about that. And then our next area I'd like to talk about is our second FRC that we've opened. I'd like to acknowledge the individuals that are here this evening, which is John Matson, our Teacher on Special Assignment, Jason Pike, our Council Working with FRC, and of course, Karina Luna, who is our Program Specialist working with our team. We are so excited to have opened up a second Family Resource Center here in Placencia Yorba Linda on the Melrose Campus. And as you know, the FRC acts as a hub in the community, and we had a hub over by the Topaz area, and now we have a hub over by our Melrose area that's really supporting the Valadez and the Melrose community. We're going to ensure that our students have what they need despite their living situations, and we really have a supportive staff that is working diligently to connect our families to resources such as food assistance, counseling, housing support, amongst many other supports. And we are so proud to see where this will take us in terms of serving the needs of our community. All right. This concludes the State of the District presentation. We thank you all for coming. We're going to take a quick 10- to 15-minute break. We have refreshments outside, and we also have music from our EDHS Hauktet for your enjoyment. We will resume the meeting in probably 10 or 15 minutes, but please enjoy the entertainment and refreshments outside.
Oh, yeah, the stream is back up. All the guests, you're free to stay, but if I were you, I wouldn't.
All right, everyone, let's take our seats and let's get this party started. If somebody sees Marilyn, can you tell her we are starting? Perfect. Okay, so moving on, we have a public comment announcement. Public comment cards are available in the foyer. Cards must be completed and turned in prior to the designated time for public comment. We provide a maximum of three minutes per person. If translation is needed, an additional three minutes will be given. Please let us know ahead of time so we can make sure we are prepared and can accommodate you. We do have a civility policy. Education Code 220 prohibits discrimination on the basis of disability, gender, gender identity, gender expression, nationality, race, or ethnicity, religion, sexual orientation, or any other characteristic that is contained in the definition of hate crimes set forth in Section 422.55 of the Penal Code, including immigration status. Per Board by law 9322.2 and Ed. Code 7043, public comments may not be for the purpose of urging the support or defeat of any ballot measure or candidate, including but not limited to any candidate for election to the governing board of the district. And with that, we'll move to 13.1, and I need a motion.
I'll make a motion to approve the resolution 24-04, week of the school administrator.
I'll second.
I have a motion by Mr. Youngblood, I have a second by Mrs. Anderson. Any comments? Or actually, we're going to turn over Dr. Gates first before we vote. We may need to see the presentation before we vote on it, I guess. All right.
Thank you, President Blades. This year's week of the school administrator is October 13th through 19th, 2024. PYLUSD has a cadre of outstanding leaders who are committed to creating a dynamic learning community that prepares each and every student for success now and in the future. It is my pleasure to introduce Matthew Callaway, the principal of Kramer Middle School, and 2024 Manager of the Year to the lectern, to introduce our Week of the Administrator's resolution. Please give him a round of applause.
Thank you and good evening, President Blades, Board of Trustees, Superintendent Dr. Churnus, and Executive Cabinet. Tonight, it is my pleasure to bring forward a resolution in accordance with Education Code 44051.1 to recognize the second week of October 2024 as the week of the school administrator. This resolution highlights the impactful role our leaders have in shaping a positive learning experience for our students and a supportive working environment for our employees. We are proud and grateful for the leaders throughout our district who model PYLUSD's core values of integrity, innovation, collaboration, and excellence every day. The Week of the School Administrator, Resolution Number 24-04. Whereas leadership matters for California's public education system and the more than 6 million students it serves, whereas school administrators are passionate, lifelong learners who believe in the value of quality public education, and whereas the title "school administrator" is a broad term used to define many education leadership posts, superintendents, assistant superintendents, principals, assistant principals, special education and adult education leaders, curriculum and assessment leaders, school business officials, classified educational leaders, and other school district employees are considered administrators, and whereas providing quality public service for student success is paramount for the profession, and whereas research shows great schools are led by great principals and great districts are led by great superintendents, these site leaders are supported by extensive administrative networks throughout the state, and whereas the state of California has declared the second full week of October as the week of the school administrator in Education Code 44015.1, and whereas the future of California's public education system depends upon the quality of its leadership. Now, therefore, be it resolved that the Placentia Yorbalinda Unified School District joins with the State Board of Education declaring October 13th through the 19th, 2024, as the week of the school administrator. Be it further resolved by the Placentia Yorbalinda Unified School District that all school leaders should be commended for their many outstanding contributions, service, and dedication to the advancement of student achievement. Thank you for your consideration of this resolution. Thank you.
Thank you, Matt. Any comments before we move to a vote? Pretty simple. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All right, we have a 5-0 vote and one, an aye from our student board member. Motion carries 6 to 0. I am now going to pass it over to Luke to give his board report.
Good evening, President Blades, trustees, Superintendent Dr. Churnus, and Executive Cabinet members. I'm excited to be here tonight to share recent happenings from our comprehensive high schools and alternative campuses. At Buena Vista Virtual Academy, Parkview senior Nolan Almeida is currently touring nationwide as Peter Pan in the Broadway musical, with the tour continuing through spring 2025. The independent study program at Parkview provides students like Nolan the flexibility to pursue their passions while fulfilling academic requirements. I just want everyone to know that me and Nolan actually sang a duet freshman year, so I'm basically on his level. El Camino Real High School is making strides to improve student attendance. During the first marking period, students with 85% to 94% attendance enjoy an ice cream sundae bar, while those with 95% or higher were treated to a pizza party. Over one-third of the student body was recognized during these events. The annual Week of Wellness will take place from October 28th to November 1st, focusing on physical and mental well-being, with themed activities including dress-up days and shout-outs for student and staff. Additionally, a blood drive will be held on October 29th, coordinated by Jennifer DeCarlo. Eldorado High School has been around for nearly 60 years. The gates opened a nest in 1966. This year's staff and student body are hoping to set the tone with 100% participation of all students, kitchen staff, custodial, teachers, administration, coaches, security, and clerical staff to wear black and gold this Friday, October 11th. This message this year at Eldorado is to set the tone academically, artistically, athletically, and set the tone of positive school culture in everything they do. A school rooftop photo will be taken, and I'm sure I can get a copy of it to share with you guys at the next meeting. If you're going to be on campus on Friday, make sure to wrap the B&amp;G, okay? Esperanza High School recently concluded its homecoming week, which featured a school-wide pep rally, football halftime show, and a dance with around 800 students in attendance. Students enjoyed Italian ice, karaoke, casino games, photo booths, and caricature artists. Esperanza is preparing their annual elementary school football game this upcoming Thursday night. Aztecs have visited their feeder elementaries and invite all the students to the game this Thursday. Elementary students will have the opportunity to come to the field at halftime to cheer, dance, and do some football drills. It should be a fun time for everyone. Esperanza is hosting an out-of-state college fair on October 15th for all their juniors and seniors. This is a great opportunity for students to broaden their scope of college by talking with over 70 out-of-state and international colleges. Venture is proud of its new coffee cart. The Venture Coffee Carts are selling coffee, hot and chocolate, and herbal tea on Tuesday and Thursday mornings in the George Key Courtyard. Everyone is welcome. Come by and grab a cup and support Venture's work experience program. Valencia Athletics has adjusted well to their new conference, Golden Empire. The girls' teams are bringing a new meaning to #TigerStrong. The flag football team is 4-0, the girls' golf is 5-0, girls' volleyball is 6-2, and girls' tennis is 2-0. Girls' cross-country finished first in their first-league cluster race. On September 25th, the girls' flag football game was chosen as the L.A. Rams' game of the week. They ended the night with a 12-6 win against Catella and a $1,000 donation to the program. Yorbalinda High School kept off homecoming week with dress-up days and encouraged everyone to come to the homecoming game this Friday at 7:00 p.m. The Yorbalinda High School Band, Guard, and Choir hosted its annual 8th grade night under the leadership of Director Bensonz Garcia. It was great to see future Mustangs already making connections to their incredible programs. And that's it.
Thank you very much. What do you wish everyone in the community knew about our PYLUSD schools?
Yeah, so I think everyone in the community should understand how fantastic our staff is all across PYLUSD. I think I can talk most about Eldorado and how amazing it is. The admin, Mr. Okamoto, who's new this year, he's been great. Teachers, custodial staff, lunch ladies, they're all fantastic. They come to work with a smile on their face, ready to treat us and their fellow workers. But every time I've also had interaction with people from Esperanza, Valencia, Yorbalinda, their activities directors, principals, they've been nothing but kind to me, and I'm sure it's the same for their students. So I'd like everyone to recognize our fantastic staff we have at PYLUSD.
Thank you very much, and we are thoroughly enjoying your reports.
Yes.
I'm just being honest, it's great, I love it. I love the energy from over there. Okay, we're going to move into public comment. Public comment is an opportunity for the public to provide input to the Board of Education. During the public comment period, board members do not dialogue with speakers or make comments regarding the information shared. We have a whopping 51, 51 people wishing to speak tonight. So that gives us one minute each. And actually, too, if we can, Jeremy, when the one minute is up, if we could cut the mics, that might be helpful as well after our last board meeting. When you come up, we're going to ask the speakers to repeat their name, and then I'm going to call the first four speakers to come forward and sit in the first row so you'll be ready for your public comment. All right, our first four. Ed Gunn, Don Miller, Paul White, and Holly Peach.
Good evening. Ed Gunn, 47-year resident. I asked myself the other day, are unions responsible for collective bargaining for pay, benefits, and working conditions? I'm pretty sure that's right. So where is it written that they should use their collective money and the people to take over and run our school boards? When a candidate is financed by a union, where does their loyalty really lie? With the students? With the parents? I.e. the captive taxpayer, or basically the employer, who pays all the bills? Or the employees? Is there loyalty to pay back the union by scraping the money out of the classroom materials, children's sports, building maintenance, and academic programs to increase pay, benefits, and working conditions? Sounds icky, but that's exactly what some people in our community and in this very room want to do and go back to. When the school board represents parents and students, and the union represents the teachers, there is a capitalistic, merit-based synergy of negotiation where not everyone is getting what they dream of or desire, but they get a good result.
Listen, I don't need people to yell to cut the mic, he's very much aware of what he's supposed to be doing. Thank you very much.
Also, can we please let everybody speak and not call out while they're speaking? Thank you.
Good evening. My name is Don Miller. I've been a resident for 30 years, a parent of three children who graduated from this district, and a grandmother of three in this district. And I speak to you today as a retired assistant superintendent of one of the largest school districts in Orange County. I have never seen a superintendent who speaks to some of the board members as subordinates, criticizing certain members publicly and even publicly endorsing and financially supporting certain board members for reelections. It's unprofessional and it's unethical. And when a well-run-
Please don't have campaign speech.
When a well-run district proposes plans to add a program such as a $33.6 million-plus Universal Sports Institute, or proposes to convert current schools into charter schools, they need to get input from the community. This did not happen, no transparency. And I will say right now, some employees in this district have been expressing fear of retaliation, and why would they feel this? Firstly, we just got done hearing about how wonderful this district is, and that doesn't happen without very strong school leaders.
Thank you.
Over 20-plus administrators and cabinet members have been dismissed.
My name is Paul White. I'm 84 years old and have lived in Yorbalinda for 51 years. I'm married, I have three adult children who also went through the district. They're married and they've given me eight grandchildren. Of the eight grandchildren, five have either been in this district or are currently in the district. And when the older ones went to school here, reading, writing, and math were the basics with no woke distraction. They did great. One graduated magna cum laude from UC Santa Cruz, and the second is at Dartmouth in New Hampshire, majoring in cybersecurity. Schools should be teaching and not indoctrinating.
Thank you very much.
Good evening. My name is Holly Peach, and I am a teacher and parent in this district. I have four children, and they have all benefited and flourished under the guidance of many amazing teachers. Recently, I left the teachers' union, not because I don't love my fellow teachers and want what's best for all of us, but because I learned that a significant amount of my dues do not go to my district, but instead go to supporting CTA, NEA, and many of the government policies. I do not support many of those policies or organizations, so why would I want my money to go to support those endeavors? When union leadership showed up at my school and told us all to vote for a particular person, I began to realize just how political the union had become. Imagine if the union came in and told any of you who to vote for. Even after hearing this over eight years ago, I still did not leave the union because I needed the safety and security that I thought that came with being a member. I was told I could request my money to be refunded or not funneled to political endeavors. Needless to say, I was angry of spending all my money to support those causes. I wish the union was not political, but it is.
Our next four speakers is Kathy Ballinger, Erica Perez, Sarah Phillips, and Linda Mannion.
My name is Kathy Ballinger Opolo, and I'm here this evening to bring the board's attention to the district's dual-language academy. I have two children in the DLA, one in 8th grade, one in 6th. Up until the middle of last year, the DLA had, by all accounts, been a program severely neglected at the district level. Thankfully, it appears that may be changing with the addition of a TK class and a major program revamp for the elementary program. But I'm here to ask, what is being done for the upper classes of the DLA? Again, it would appear that they are to be neglected. My family has been involved with the DLA for almost nine years, and after losing the original two founders, I can tell you that we have felt like an unwanted exotic pet that no one knew what to do with. With all due respect to the amazing presentation we just saw, you'll notice there was no mention of this almost decade-old program. Thankfully, Beth Fisher saw the value of our students. She worked tirelessly to create a program for us at middle school and continues to do all she can to make the program the best it can be. However, we continue to lack resources necessary to make this program-
Thank you. Erica?
Hello, everyone. My name is Erica Perez, and just like Kathy, I have two children in the dual-language program. My daughter is in 8th grade, and my son is in 4th grade, still at Glenview. I would like to continue what Kathy has been saying. We have no TOSA to oversee our specialized program. This work falls onto the admins and teachers who already have their hands full. Speaking of the teachers, did you know that they are using their own unpaid time to search for resources and translate their English curriculum? This is unacceptable. Furthermore, those of us with students in 8th grade still are completely in the dark with what is happening in high school. Beth Fisher spent years preparing for our arrival at Bernardo. As we know, planning hasn't even begun for the high school model, which would hypothetically need to be ready to accept our students next year. The parents of the 8th grade students were presented with a model last spring. The general consensus amongst these parents was that it hastily thrown together and just something to shut us up. Thank you.
Good evening. My name is Sarah Phillips, and I'm the teacher librarian at Yorbalinda High School. My year's off to a great start. I haven't come to speak in over a year, but I want to let everyone know the library is still well-used and students would love to be there. I'm in Week 2 of my freshman library orientations, where they learn the rules of the library, where everything is in the library, how to use the catalog, how to find books on the shelves, how to do research using books, encyclopedias, websites, and databases. All of this is part of being an information and media literate citizen. It's a jam-packed week, and I'm thankful that the language arts teachers let me have this week with their classes every year. The California State Legislature passed a law regarding the importance of media literacy across the curriculum, so I'm excited to collaborate with teachers in all subjects to incorporate media literacy into their classrooms. It is such an important skill to be able to evaluate any source of information for currency, reliability, authority, and purpose. Here's to us all being informed, literate citizens. Thank you and good night.
Thanks, Sarah.
Linda Mannion. As we settle into the 24-25 school year, I've been reflecting on past school years and the past culture at PYLUSD that made our school district so unique. A school culture is not about an institution, rather it is about a collection of people with a passion and desire to create an environment that values relationships. At Apple, we have a saying that "an injury to one is an injury to all." And to that end, I would like to reflect and remember past administrators that helped shape our past cultures. These include Dr. Rick Lopez, Dr. Linda Adamson, Richard McElinden, Tom Craig, Dave Giordano, Brad Runge, Joey Davis, Jeff Giles, Misty Sampson, Scott Missouri, Richard Dan, Jose Miranda, Melanie Cormona, Paul Kim, Jamie Dow, Jeff Smith, Eva Martinez, Jane Rowe, Julie Patsch. They're gone from our district, but not from our hearts.
Okay. Our next speaker will be Gloria Johnson, Billy Smith, Kirsten Howard, and Priscilla Palacios.
Good evening, Gloria Johnson, 6th grade teacher at Golden. How wonderful to hear of the innovation and revenue and funding available. Family Resource Center follows the model of community schools that has become the hallmark of CTA, so that is awesome. I'm here to speak about how I wish money would trickle down in PYL. I wish huge sums of money were not used for a select few rather than doing the most good for the most students. I wish money went to finishing the Valencia High School kitchen. I wish it would cover $100 bus fees and $350 team fees for athletes. I wish it would cover contributions from football players upwards of $800 a person. I wish it would give back to counselors removed from non-Titel 1 schools, because all students deserve support. I wish it would go to increasing classroom supply budgets. I get $10 per student, $240 for an entire school year for my classroom. Some only get $5 a year. I wish the PE budgets at secondary would go up from $1 or $2 each. I wish. Imagine what we would do. Look at the achievement.
Billy Smith?
I'm Billy Smith. Good evening. I'm here tonight because what should be a place of civil discussion has become a circus of partisan politics. President Blades, you allow people who agree with your extreme views hijack this meeting, shouting political slogans during the Pledge of Allegiance, displaying ridiculous partisan signs, and even speaking long past their time limit. Meanwhile, people who disagree with you are shut down and escorted out. Teachers, dedicated professionals in this district are bullied, slandered, right here at this place of work. You've even used your official board reports to continue the same attacks you spread on social media. You've let your personal politics take priority over the well-being of students, staff, and this community. This behavior has no place on a school board. We deserve leadership that puts education, fairness, respect first. Please return this meeting to the professionalism and integrity it once had.
Thank you.
Hi, my name is Kirsten Howard, and I'm a mother of two PYL graduates. As a member of this community, I am concerned with the overall behavior of this board, not only in regards to transparency concerning decisions in its making, but also in terms of the actions of the board members during meetings. Specifically, the lack of respect shown to some speakers. As a representative to this district, I feel it is important that members of the board model the kind of behavior we wish our students to show, including eye contact when someone is addressing them, and refraining from conversations or comments with others while an individual is at the podium addressing the board, regardless if you agree or not. I find it unfair that certain speakers, both on board and in the audience, are silenced or removed when their comments are not supported by the board majority, and others are allowed to remain in attendance and continue their comments when the board majority supports their comments. I ask that the board please be kind, be the kind of model that we want our children to be proud of. In closing, I would like to commend Marilyn Anderson for her perseverance with this board to provide transparency and to support our teachers.
Priscilla Palacios. A few weeks ago, I attended a meeting for the dual-language parents in a cluttered and disheveled room at Bernardo that used to be a beautiful library. The library well-located to three separate buildings on campus in which bookshelves now randomly line the hallways. No library experience for our students, no quiet space for students to read and interact with literature. This is not innovation. The concerns were many and palpable, and overwhelmingly surrounded the two new dual-language teachers drawn in by the charter school. Concerns range from one new dual-language teacher not having the command of the Spanish language to the degree that his own students have. The other new dual-language teacher has an adversarial relationship with his students to the point that, as one parent expressed, their child, quote, "feared going to class." This teacher is also, while trying to get credentialed, having to translate his own curriculum into Spanish on his own time. Why are our dual-language students being taught by ill-equipped and unprepared educators?
Thank you.
This is not putting students first.
Thank you. Our next four speakers, Sarah Caballero, Matt Wilkerson, Diane Hansen, and Raquel Fleischner.
Okay, I'm going to try to do this fast. My name is Sarah Caballero. I want to congratulate the board on being able to put the lights in Eldorado High School. That being said, Mrs. Anderson, I sat in this very room almost one year to the day, October 10th, 2023, and spoke publicly with the board allowing the lights project to move forward when it came to the vote by the board. To move forward, you took it upon yourself to make it clear that you would be voting for reasons, and I quote, "I am not voting because I want to ensure that the neighbors are going to be good neighbors." It is sad to me at the time that you would choose to put others above the children in our district, but you chose that, whether I disagreed or not. So imagine my surprise when yesterday at the ribbon cutting, you were there sitting, smiling with a big face, and in some way looking responsible for what had been done. In many of your actions, I have not seen you putting children first, and yesterday your actions were completely clear. You made your decision to vote against the lights being installed, and yet you chose to sit there and speak and praise, seek the praise, and celebratory photo opportunity and took advantage of a situation. Actions speak volumes and many times more than words. Yesterday, your actions solidified my impressions of you as a person who is truly only for yourself and for your own satisfaction, and for those better and for the children.
Good evening. Matt Wilkerson, parent of two kids in the district. There is a Turkish proverb that states, "When a clown moves into a palace, he doesn't become a Sultan, the palace becomes a circus." a Sultan; the palace becomes a circus." PYLUSD has become a circus under the leadership of Superintendent Chernis and Board President Blades. Many of the accomplishments mentioned earlier tonight are simply not true. The district grew mainly this year because of state mandated pre-K. The Universal Sports Institute is not making money. It's actually costing the district somewhere between $8,000 and $16,000 per student. The numbers are there, they're real. Todd even mentioned that. The enrollment of the USI is actually under 90 students, not the 150 stated publicly by Ms. Blades. This administration appears obsessed with shiny distractions and has forgotten what the teachers and administrators who are now heading for the exits, they've forgotten their their contribution that made this district what it was. The students and stakeholders of this district simply deserve better.
Good evening. Diane Hansen. My husband and I have lived in Yorba Linda for almost 40 years, and though we have no children, we have spent our entire careers in public education. I was taught in this district a million years ago, and I spent 30 years in administration in other districts. The purpose of public education is to provide a safe and welcoming environment for all K-12 children, to promote a sense of belonging. This board policies and behaviors, as I have observed them in board meetings, et cetera, are not allowing that to happen. I have two major concerns. The first is that Cal State Fullerton will no longer send student teachers to this district. The teachers here are incredible and I can't say anymore about it, they're just phenomenal. The impact will be irreparable. And then the mass exodus of 20 to 30 administrators since the spring, not because they wanted to leave, but the greatest impact has been on our children. They're missing out, needless to be deprived.
Hi, I'm Raquel Fleischner, a mom of three in the district and an educator. On March 24th of 2023, Leandra Blades made a YouTube video attacking my character and stating that I was, quote, "paid for" by the teachers' union. A simple Google search would have shown her that my years as a teacher were spent at a charter school, and I have never been a member of any teachers' union, let alone paid by one. I'm just a mom with kids in our schools who's concerned about the large number of administrators and teachers who have left our district, among other things. Ms. Blades' tenure on our school board is like a scene from Mean Girls. Too many of us in this community have been personally victimized on a public platform by Leandra Blades. Our community will come together in November to say PYLUSD is a place where we respect everyone, even when we disagree. Thank you.
Kimmy, Kimmy Ark, Sue Sawyer, Steve Safka, and Heather Brown.
Good evening. I'm happy to hear that Eldorado finally got their football lights after 30 years of asking. I'm happy to hear about the Family Resource Center at Melrose Elementary School. Great things are continuing to happen in our school district, and I thank the board majority for putting our kids first in their decision-making. Your leadership and standing up for parents' rights are pivotal in our community. You are always transparent with us, answering our questions and being open and caring to our concerns, to be fiscally responsible without beholden to special interests, bureaucrats, or the corrupt unions that will do anything for politics, selfish agendas, and control over the people. We will not allow the unions to take over our wonderful district and indoctrinate our children. We will not allow the union to strip our children of their innocence, and we will not allow the union to take away our parental rights to those children. Thank you to the board majority for putting our kids first. It is your duty as a board member to set aside your personal politics or opinions and remember to represent the people that voted to put you there. Don't disappoint them.
Sue?
A minute. My name is Sue Sawyer. I now teach at Valades Middle School Academy. I was involuntarily transferred without a single conversation, explanation, or phone call, along with several other staff members. All three Esperanza administrators were released early last year and sent home before their contracts were up. This wasn't a move for the betterment of our schools. This was retaliation, plain and simple. I have heard, I have several critical questions. How can we expect any positive educational leadership when decisions lack transparency or even the basic respect of clear and timely communication? We are prioritizing internal politics over the needs of our students. Why is equipment that could be used to benefit Valades students sitting idle at Esperanza when our students deserve access to it now? Our students need resources now, not months or possibly years down the road. Why are we spending money to purchase the same equipment we already have sitting unused? How does this align with the values our district claims to uphold? Where is the professional integrity? Where is the ethical leadership? These are questions I urge you to consider for all stakeholders, every student and every teacher affected by these decisions. I'll leave you with those.
Thank you.
A good leader doesn't create fear and division.
Is Steve Safka here? Steve Safka? All right, Heather Brown.
I've heard a lot of negative talk about USI and OCSCS. As a parent of a student who only this year finally returned to PYLUSD, because of these opportunities, I want to thank Dr. Chernis and the board members who voted to bring, to make those a reality. My son is engaged and he's thriving, and whenever anyone asks him how he's enjoying his school year so far, he gushes praise for the program he's in. We were resigned to never returning to the district before these fresh and innovative opportunities became reality in PYLUSD. So once again, thank you very much. You are seen and appreciated. Thank you.
The next four, Leslie Alexander, Nellie Raphael, Kim Flint, and Marguerite Bennett.
I'll just go ahead. I'm Leslie Alexander. Mrs. Buck and Mrs. Anderson, I understand teachers showed overwhelming support for both of you at the pre-servance event at the PAC. Their applause was sustained and exuberant. In stark contrast, the unpopularity of Dr. Chernis was on full display. He received a very chilly response from teachers. He has earned his unpopularity from the chaos he brings to our schools. The following is an example of chaos I experienced as a teacher last school year. He eliminated the use of suspension for students with dangerous behaviors. The No Suspension Directive left students with dangerous behaviors on campus, including those who had made threats against other students. Dr. Chernis risked the safety of my students, and he risked the safety of my colleagues and myself to make himself look better. Dr. Chernis, if the teachers were to take a vote of no confidence, how low would that confidence have to be in order for you to finally admit that you are not a good fit for this school district?
The teachers' union, Apple, is spreading misinformation about our board majority and the budget for USI and district charter school. They are misleading retired teachers in the community about administrators being fired and claiming teachers have been let go, all to create unrest in the community. They blame the current board majority, even though decisions are made collectively by all five members. I would like to emphasize that no teachers have been fired or let go in our district this past school year. Data shows this past year having a lower turnover and a growing waiting list for our district, indicating stability and success. You can find this information, as I did, by contacting the district directly. Despite claiming to be nonpartisan and supportive of all teachers, Apple appears to only support left-leaning individuals for leadership positions to sit at the dais. I have heard from sources that they create a hostile work environment for teachers who do not share the same political views and who do not support these chosen individuals. Apple is pushing their preferred individuals to control the district, disregarding the needs of parents and students. Who can teachers go to for protection from the union?
Thank you. Thank you. American Association Educators.
Before we continue, please allow the speakers to speak without laughing at them and jeering at them. Everybody has a right to speak, everybody. And and do not be rude and call out. Let everybody speak whether you agree or not. You don't need to clap for them. You can clap for who you want, but while they're speaking, let them speak.
My name is Kim Flint. I came to talk about thanking, I wanted to come and thank the board majority for the lights at Eldorado, but that's already been talked about a lot of times, so I'm totally saying this off the top of my head. I remember back on October 10th of 2023, when Marilyn did vote no against the lights. And then to see her, see pictures of her that night was really disgusting. I thought it was really distasteful and really disingenuous that she used that as a photo op to try to be one of the good guys. Stop trying to be one of the good guys and fly on their shirt tails.
My name is Marguerite Dunay, and I am a 50-year member of Yorba Linda. My husband and I live next to the Orange County School of Computer Science and Universal Sports Institute. We have lived in this house for 36 years and have been good neighbors to the school. We are used to students being dropped off 30 minutes before and 30 minutes after school. Since the school opened, there is more staff at the school. This was verified by Mrs. Givens, the school vice principal, when I personally met with her on September 30th. We have never had an issue with parking until this year. Cars are parked in front of our house, all cross the street, up and down the street, several houses, and up and down Futura. These cars belong to the staff as they are here all day long. These are public streets, but I want to know where the people that service our homes, therapists, gardeners, housekeepers, et cetera, and our family and friends are supposed to park. I have spoke to the mayor of Yorba Linda, Mr. Tony Wang, in charge of traffic. I've sent an email to Ms. Blades and to [inaudible].
Thank you.
Please solve this problem.
Thank you. The next four speakers, Julie Klinkenberg, Andy Manino, Sam Mayovich, and Mark Fury.
Julie Klinkenberg. First, shout out to all our amazing teachers and coaches who continue to work and serve our community during an uneasy time. You are our heroes and we are so thankful for you. Secondly, I want to thank trustees, Mrs. Anderson and Mrs. Buck. You are the are the only trustworthy ones on the dais. The two of you remain calm, confident, and classy. You continue to take your board position seriously. You read the agenda, you do your homework, you research items, you come prepared with critical questions. Thank you for trying to keep my hard-earned taxpayer contributions in a budget that supports all students, not just an elite few. You are intelligent, informed, and you are inquisitive when things around here just don't seem right. You demonstrate how to hold someone accountable by being assertive, that's firm yet respectful. You are a shining example of what public education officials should be, champions for students, staff, and families working together peacefully, cooperatively, and transparently, all while demonstrating grace under pressure. You make me proud to be an American and an active citizen in our community. I look forward to working at your success.
Good afternoon, or evening, I guess. My name is Ondo Manino. I have two special needs students in our wonderful district. And it's unfortunate that it seems the board has been distracted by the newest shiny thing which seems to come in the form of USI. And I don't really understand why we're spending all this money on this one particular program when it sounds like there's so many other things that need help. I also keep hearing from people, supporters of the board majority, that teachers aren't leaving, but we have different teachers every year. I had a really talented teacher who was wonderful to my my non-verbal autistic son, and she's not here this year. She is in a completely different place. There was no indication that she was not going to be here this year, but lo and behold, oh, like a week before the school year started, got a first-year teacher. No offense to her, she's a wonderful person, but that's doesn't jive at all with the idea that somehow people aren't leaving. That's about it. I just am very disappointed and also sixtemper tyrannus.
My name is Sam Mayovich. It is impossible to believe when, at the September session, Board President Blades claimed to be unaware that the county board had used the Proposition 39 loophole to impose the Magnolia Charter School in our district without either the consent or even the notification of our board. The county board had made it a public matter, and all five members of the county board are associates of President Blades. They know that she will ultimately further the interests of those who stand to benefit from the expansion of the Magnolia Charter School, the California Republic Leadership Academy, and the Orange County Classical Academy. What these charter schools will do is drain average daily attendance money from our district into the pockets of the administrators of these three charter school schemes. The county board is currently using our taxpayer money to recruit students into schools over which we will have no say on curriculum, hiring, materials, and maintenance. We will still be paying the bills, we will just not have a voice in what bills get paid and to whom they will get paid. The same people who support these charter schools and homeschool schemes have endorsed the candidates in our district as well.
My name, my name is Mark Fury, and I've spoken many times. One of the last times was two years ago, on behalf of my mom, who taught here in this district for 25 years, and trying to explain to her the role of a union today versus the role of a union when she was in the union. And that is benefits, pay, et cetera. How did they get involved in the curriculum? I could not explain to my mom how so much is involved in the curriculum. I'm actually very disappointed that the campaign out there, "Save our schools," and the people who voted for the majority of this board, we saved the schools. Did you see all the results? If you guys are teachers here and you believe in your kids, you should be up there standing So you don't need to be a part of the union.
Thank you. Our next four, Sam Calaviti, David Peterson, Andy Falco, and Shani Murray.
My name's Sam Calavita. My wife Monica and I have put nine children through this district since 1993, all of whom have advanced degrees from universities across the country, and we have been very pleased with the district. With regard to the programs here at the USI, there's a lot of dissension, disagreement out there, but one thing we can all rally around, and that is the well-being of our children. Childhood obesity, teen suicide, drug use, and depression are all times highs. These programs that the board has brought forth lets us single in on these children, their needs, and to be able to enable them to have a means and a way to creatively or effectively do what needs to be done to facilitate a recovery in this. So I say, you know what, if it's good for the kids, then it's good for all of us.
Dave Peterson, and I think 42 years in Yorba Linda. Two points today. First one is for Marilyn. Marilyn, I learned a lot this year as the last couple months I've been at the board meetings. I thought that board members had access to all the information they needed, and at PYLUSD, they don't. You had to put public requests in to get information that should have been readily available, and you were patient and you were perseverant, and I thank you. The second item is tonight's agenda. The state of the district was scheduled for September, and obviously that had to be redone, but all of a sudden put into a board meeting. We were blessed by finding all things have happened, but the community missed out. Really, this should have been done like in four town councils based on the four high school feeder areas. That way, people could interact from the community and the high schools. Consider it for next year.
Hello. I've had about six kids in this district over the last 20 years, and I have one son who just could not seem to get the hang of school. He was was sad before he'd go to school, he was sad when he came home. But this year, he's at the Orange County School of Computer Sciences, and I have never seen such a big smile on his face. He wakes up early, he waits for me at the door so he can be there, and he stays late. For the first time, he stays after school to do after-school programs. It is an amazing school. Dr. Fisher, Dr. Alex Chernis, Leandra Blades, Todd and Sean, and Dr. Gates, and everybody else that's done an amazing job with OCSCS. I just, I just cannot think- I just cannot thank you enough. You've changed his life, and he looks forward. I ask him how his day was. Instead of getting the normal "it's okay," like I did with the other kids, he tells me how his day was and what things he's doing. He's making animatronics of whale and was able to tell me all about it today, and so he's very excited about what's happening. So I just really appreciate it. He was the one son that I kind of was worried about. I don't think I have to worry about him anymore. He's come out of his shell, he has more friends than he's ever had before, and I just love the man that he's created. Thank you.
Hi, Shani Murray. I want to thank the Association of Placentia Linda Educators, Apple. The majority of our wonderful PYL teachers are Apple members, so when you say teachers are good, you're saying our union is good. Thank you, Apple, for working to create the best possible learning environment for our students. I also want to thank Marilyn for supporting our students and pushing for greater transparency. It's disappointing to hear that you have to file a public records request to get budget information that should be readily available to you. Thank you for being such a diligent and dedicated board member. Finally, this is my last year as a PYL parent, but I would still love to see us return to having semesters that are the same length. I appreciate the move to end the first semester at winter break, but doing so without moving up the school year makes no sense. Please return to the original PYL plan of moving the school year up.
The next four, Dee Lawrence Radler, Carol Tucker, Amy Sanchez, and Doug Thompson.
Dee Lawrence Radler. This community deserves better. Despite numerous requests from two sitting board members, a large contingent of the public, multiple formal public records requests, the current leadership of the PYLUSD has refused to be transparent or fiscally responsible. We have made available today a series of emails that the district has failed to provide members of the board, the public, that evidence several lies we have been and are continuing to be told on an almost daily basis. When they stalled, deflated, and deflected, and gave us ever-changing excuses, apparently they failed to realize that each of their communications had two sides. Thank you for the Department of State Architects promptly providing us the information that this district apparently did not want us to see. Tonight, you will hear a series of comments describing just one example of how this board majority and the superintendent intentionally misled the public and fellow board members. The statements were not mere spin and bluster, they were outright falsehoods intended to advance a personal.
Carol Tucker. We have heard so many excuses dating back to the first discussion about USI regarding its exempt status. Our superintendent, certain members of this body, and a select few members of the public had been insisting that this project was exempt from review by the DSA. In fact, they repeatedly went so far as to claim that they possessed a letter, a letter, confirming this project's exempt status. Guess what? There was no such letter, it never existed. We can now document what the superintendent knew and when he knew it. For those that don't know, the DSA acts as the equivalent of your local city building inspector. Accordingly, they stand as our only protection against unsafe, unlawful building practices.
Two factors establish the null knowing falsity of their claims. First, trustee Marilyn Anderson filed a formal public records request asking for a copy of this alleged exemption letter after being repeatedly denied access to this critical piece of information necessary for her to make an informed decision about the USI. Why a sitting board member had to make a formal public records request for something that should be readily accessible to all sitting members of this body remains a disturbing mystery, but I digress. In response to said request, the district only provided Marilyn, Mrs. Anderson, with a copy of a publication entitled DSA IRA 22. This document is nothing more than a generic advisory publication. It certainly does not amount to a letter stating that a particular project was exempt
The second factor is May 17th email from the DSA that is included in the packet. The email lists 10 separate reasons why the USI project was unequivocally not exempt from review by the DSA. The superintendent knew about this letter, yet he failed to disclose this critical information to either the public or to at least two sitting board members. Instead, he and the board majority have spent the last few months trying to deflect and shift blame to a prior board, after the DSA effectively shut down the Casa Loma site pending compliance. The May 17th email explicitly notes that the fire sprinklers were merely part of one of 10 separate issues cited by the DSA as reasons this project was not exempt from review. And even the issue had been grossly mischaracterized, as recently as our last board meeting.
The next four speakers, Carrie Brunel, Alyssa Hamilton, Lindsay Glennon, and Anita Lee.
The fire sprinkler issue is far more nuanced than represented by the superintendent and board majority. This is the real issue. The Casa Loma site has been miscategorized as a business building rather than an educational building for quite some time. This error was not discovered until the DSA began to investigate the site following inquiries from the public. This error did not result in the DSA believing there were sprinklers previously installed as claimed by trustee Blades. Rather, it meant that the DSA did not believe fire sprinklers were required at the site. State law requires that design professional review and sign off on all district projects. Just so happens, the same design professional signed off on both Buena Vista Virtual Academy and USI. If the superintendent is determined to assign blame for this particular issue, he should redirect his rage in this direction. The failure of our design professional to properly disclose that both of these projects involved the presence of our students is not something we would want any of our board Regardless of the apparent Casa Loma zoning error, the superintendent and the board majority appear to have entirely missed the point as to why the DSA gets involved in the first place. One reason is to catch the oversights of this nature. Had the USI project gone forward without review as clearly intended by the superintendent and board majority, the USI would currently be operating at a site without, at the very least, proper fire safety equipment. We have to believe that every member of the board would find this situation unacceptable. Yet, the majority supported the hasty approval of the USI when there was information available to say, pump the brakes on this project. Either Blades, Fraser, and Youngblood were complicit in this apparent cover-up, or they too were kept in the dark. But if that was the case, they each failed to engage in at least a modicum of due diligence, included but not limited to reviewing the documents we have made available tonight, or reaching out directly to the DSA for clarification before rubber-stamping a project of this nature. Either way, this conduct was a breach of trust.
Trustees Blades and Fraser seem to have intentionally attempted to mislead us all, at one point stating that they had seen this nonexistent exemption letter. At best, their conduct amounted to willful ignorance, more likely, it appears to represent complicity. This particular conduct does not represent concern about the students or the rights of parents. The contrary, aside from the potentially disastrous fiscal concerns, this group appears to have been willing to sacrifice the safety of our students, teachers, and staff in order to hastily approve a vanity project. Regardless of our political or philosophical differences, this entire community should be unified in our outrage over the reckless manner in which the superintendent and board majority appear to have chosen personal vanity over the safety of our students, teachers, and staff.
Looking deeper into the packet you'll receive, you'll see an email from Dr. Chernis to the state architects dated April 14th, 2024. This one's outrageous. First, the superintendent specifically called out baselessly by name a community member who actually had no direct or indirect contact with the state architects. Recall, this is the very same superintendent who intimated falsely that trustee Anderson had outrageously contacted the DSA in an email that he distributed inappropriately and unprofessionally to select members of the public with a vindictive call for them to take action against her. His subsequent defense was that he was only asking a question. That's wholly inconsistent with his call for action. Even today, knowing trustee Anderson had no contact with the DSA after all, has he apologized or issued a retraction? Of course not. That would require humility and honesty.
Our next speakers are Fran Hanley, Jeffrey Sukard, Julie Sukard, and Lynda Cohn.
The superintendent's tactic of hurling basis claims against his perceived opponents with no accountability seems to be a pattern. Once again, in the April 14th email, he made a call for action. This time, he asked a state official not to respond to a member of the public. Under what authority does he believe that it would be appropriate to ask a state official to breach his duty to the public? Finally, in response to the DSA's inquiry about the USI project, Chernis stated that the scope of this project did not exceed $119,000. Really, the scope of this multimillion-dollar project, multi-phased project, did not exceed $119,000? Was he intentionally trying to mislead the DSA on behalf of the Placentia Yorba Linda School District? Was he actively committing an unlawful project subdivision in order to avoid DSA review? Was he really unaware that the installation of a turf field is subject to review regardless of costs due to accessibility issues? Whatever his motivation, this conduct could have resulted in serious danger, subjected the district to immaturity, and exposed each and every board member.
The final part of the packet relates to the Orange County School of Computer Science. This project was almost certainly subject to DSA review, yet the project was not submitted for review despite voiced concerns, nor did the district request an exemption concurrence letter, a simple process costing only $400. If the superintendent and board majority believed these projects were exempt from DSA review, ask yourself why, in the face of expressed public concern, they would not have availed themselves of this process. The only rational answer is that they knew these projects were not exempt, and they did not want to formally expose themselves to inconvenient scrutiny. As the packet documents, the DSA has had no contact with the Bernardo Yorba site for about two years. Both the OCSCS and the hastily relocated USI do not even appear on their radar. As we also know, the DSA was not the only one kept in the dark about the midnight relocation of the USI. Neither the public nor at least two board members were notified of the superintendent's intent to relocate the USI project during the summer hiatus without board approval.
Julie Sukard. Wasn't really too much to ask that a special board meeting be called to discuss a major change to a project that was hastily approved in a separate special board meeting, and they have the nerve to claim they are the most transparent administration in the history of this district. Apparently, no lessons were learned from the Casa Loma debacle. All this controversy could have been avoided by simply complying with the state law. As with any bureaucracy, such compliance would likely have resulted in a short delay. However, avoiding a potentially inconvenient delay does not justify ignoring state law and jeopardizing the safety of our students, teacher, and staff. This was just the latest example of how the superintendent and board majority are unwilling to follow the rules when they conflict with their personal agendas. This has nothing to do with parents' rights or school choice. These phrases have been weaponized in order to order the district and divide the public for personal gain. As we said in the opening, this community deserves better.
When it dies down, you can start.
Lynda Cohn. I didn't quite understand those last 10 speakers. Somebody explain afterwards, maybe, but here we have increased enrollment.
Excuse me. Sorry. Please stop. Who's calling out? Can you please stop and let the woman speak?
Let's start our time again, please.
Where was I? Increased enrollment, increased test scores, that hasn't even been mentioned. We've got UCI that's making us, I think, $1 million. We've got parent reports that kids are delighted with these innovative programs. We have a 12% raise over the last three years for our teachers, and yet the union is very unhappy with you guys, at least most of you, not all. My question to the union is, let's be transparent. Union, members of the union have stated that their desire is to take back this board, and their first action is going to be to buy out Mr. Chernis's or Dr. Chernis's contract at the sum of $375,000. I guess they may buy out everyone up there to get rid of him. And they're going to bring back the Cal State Fullerton student teachers so that they can teach CRT and gender.
Our next speakers are Karen, Mark Holt, Maria Lupita Stubbs, and Tiffany Dale.
I've been in support of Leandra Blades since the very beginning, and my support of her has only grown stronger despite the harassment I get for doing so from lots of these people back here. She not only did exactly what she promised she would do, she's done even more than I ever expected despite having to deal with the never-ending onslaught of disgusting and vitriolic attacks against her and her family, even her kids. Thanks to her, along with Dr. Chernis and the current board majority, our students now have additional learning options to help them excel in their academics. Yet, the union continues to try to sabotage these successes and spreads horrendous lies about Leandra and Dr. Chernis and what's happening in the district. They scare teachers and parents with lies like, "The district is getting rid of AP classes," in an effort to create the very chaos they claim only they can fix. They want to go back to the way things used to be. Well, we don't. We love the direction the district is going, and it's now students-first with parent involvement, growing enrollment, and rising test scores. The community needs to get one thing perfectly clear.
I'm pleasantly surprised Facebook says a lot of you had fangs and claws and things like that, but... So my name is Mark Holt. I've been a resident of Yorba Linda for over 25 years. My wife and I have raised our kids here, three of four still are attending schools here as well. Tonight, I want to acknowledge the tremendous progress of our school board has made with many challenges and difficulties. You have stayed strong even in the face of opposition, personal attacks, and agendas that put selfish desires and resentments before learning independence and success of our kids, and also trying to take choices away from parents and raising their own kids. So I commend you, your teams, and your great work, and your perseverance, and steadfast persistence to fight through the noise, to do what is best for our kids and our schools and our community. You've made significant strides from expanding academic programs and increasing mental health resources, improving facilities, how to create a safe, nurturing, inspiring environment for every student equally. This progress is a testament of your commitment and teamwork, always ensuring that the decisions are made with the best interest of the students and mine.
Thank you.
Good evening, everyone. Maria Lupita Stubbs. As an Area 2 constituent, I have a clear perspective on the board's positive work for PYLSD students and families because I've attended these meetings over the past four years regularly. And so what I want to say is that if I only relied on information from my Area 2 that trustee Marilyn Anderson here gives to her constituents, then the perspective that I would have on this board would be very negative. And let me explain. Trustee Anderson has been telling her constituents that this Trustee Anderson has been telling her constituents that this board is grossly overspending on programs and facilities by three times the actual amount. I know this because I speak to those constituents. So, if trustee Anderson continues to negatively and dishonorably misrepresent our board and superintendent, I believe it would be best for her to step down ASAP. Misleading constituents is both disrespectful and unproductive. Even if you might think it'll get you reelected, it just won't.
Tiffany?
Hi, I'm Tiffany. I have two children that have gone through the district. And I just want to express my gratitude to the current board majority for their unwavering commitment to our parental rights. It's disheartening to see us labeled as extremists simply for advocating to protect our children. A former principal and union candidates have dismissed our concerns as a non-issue, suggesting that it's merely a sensationalized topic meant to draw attention to our so-called extremist viewpoints. However, these are not extremist viewpoints. Just one example in our state is Chico Unified School District. Their model adopts prohibiting school personnel from disclosing a child's gender identity. An 11-year-old experiencing gender dysphoria was socially transitioned using an affirmation model until the mother was able to step in and get health support, mental health support, for her daughter, who since has now decided not to identify as a boy. I commend our board majority for standing firm in the fight for parental rights and for recognizing the urgent need to protect our children.
Our last three speakers, Jocelyn Burdowski, Crystal Noble, and Joey Davis. Jocelyn, you're first.
I've been here over 20 years. I've seen several superintendents come and go. I can attest that Dr. Chernus is revolutionary. He is the best fit for our district. Dr. Chernus asked the staff to dream big, and that's happened. He and our board majority have made big dreams happen. Before them, I heard a lot of talk with very limited action. We are now not only dreamers, but doers. Leandra Blades is a woman of action. When she sees or hears of an issue, she gets answers. If she hears a good idea, she sees that it gets done. Lights it all, though, that's action. The thing that's closest to my heart is a charter at OCSCS. This is a parent's dream, a school focused on meeting learners where they are and helping them to become leaders. I typically champion marginalized students and students with identified disabilities. This inclusion program has been amazing. Thank you, Leandra, and the board majority for making these dreams happen and making dreams come true. Thank you for saving the schools.
Hello, Crystal Noble. I have three children in the district. I just wanted to thank the board. I don't have anything prepared tonight, but I thought I'd come. I thought it was really important for me to speak. Thank you, Dr. Chernus, Dr. Gates, Dr. Yang, all the board members here, Mrs. Blades, Mr. Fraser, Mr. Youngblood, even Marilyn Anderson and Carrie Buck. I thank you for your time. I know this takes a lot out of your personal time and family, so I really appreciate it. I know the community members on both sides appreciate all of your time and dedication to our students and our school district. I definitely want to thank the board majority and Dr. Chernus and Dr. Gates for the focus on students and parental rights. That is definitely something that's very, very important to me and to a lot of people here. I also want to congratulate you on a lot of the success you're having, even though we're having a lot of misinformation from behind us. I am speaking to a lot of people in the community and getting a lot of teachers who actually former teachers who wanted me to speak tonight.
Thank you.
And they're getting a lot of pressure from the union.
My name is Joey Davis. I'm here as a 50-year resident of Placentia, and I spent the last 18 years as administrator in PYL USD, the last eight as principal of Eldorado High School. Last spring, we started to hear rumors about administrators being let go or pushed out. I can tell you that those weren't just rumors. Administrators in PYL were often harassed, and district leadership created a toxic environment. We were called into HR for minor incidents, put on leave without cause, several were given an hour to clean out their office, and then escorted to their car like a common criminal. In January, I was told I wouldn't be back at Eldorado, and I was offered a job at the district office. There was one condition: I would have to lie and tell everyone that I wanted to leave Eldorado High School. I declined that opportunity. In February, I was given a letter that indicated I would be released or reassigned, and I would be notified of the details by June 30th. The letter contained a lie. It indicated that the board had approved the letter I received, but according to public statements made by board members, my fate was not discussed in closed session.
No. Let's go to consent. All right, let's move on to consent calendar. Actions proposed for the consent calendar items are consistent with approved practices of the district and are deemed routine in nature. The trustees receive board agenda backup information in advance of scheduled meetings. Does anybody else want to interrupt our meeting? If you do, just please leave. We're not going to let them interrupt our meeting. Let's just continue on. Whoever's going to disrupt our meeting, move. Get out of the room.
Luke, I understand you need to leave.
That'd be great. Thank you so much.
You're welcome. Have a good night, Luke. All right.
Good job, Luke.
You should give a medal.
I know.
Can I come with you, Luke?
Yeah.
Did you help me with my econ assignment? Yeah.
Okay, once again, we're going to the consent calendar. Actions proposed for the consent calendar items are consistent with approved practices of the district and are deemed routine in nature. The trustees receive board agenda backup information in advance of scheduled meetings and are prepared to vote with knowledge on the block vote items. Are there any items that need to be polled tonight?
Yes. I'd like to poll 18.2, 19.22, and 21.3.
Okay, so that's 18.2, 19.22, and 21.3. Okay. All right, then I need a motion to approve the following items except the ones that were polled.
I'll make a motion to approve the consent calendar as amended.
Second. I have a motion by Mr. Fraser. I have a second by Mrs. Buck. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Motion carries 5-0.
Point of order, there's no 19.22.
12. 21? 21's the last one.
You are correct. It's 19.21.
Okay. So, we'll amend the polled item to 19.21. All right, so we had a vote, 5-0. That's approved, so 18.2, Marilyn, please.
Okay. I would like to make a motion to approve the warrant listing in the following amounts. Check number 266952 through 267842. Current year expenditures from September 1st, 2024 through September 28th, 2024, for $15 million, and payroll registers for $3 million.
I second.
Okay, I have a motion from Mrs. Anderson. I have a second by Mr. Youngblood.
Okay. I pulled this item because I had some questions about some of the things that were listed, and I kind of wanted to discuss them. So, first, and we got an excellent explanation about this, but because I've been questioned about it, I wanted to bring it up. Warren 8200267284 for the CRLA Yorba Linda for $135,007. 82, it's in the 9818200267284. CRLA. Okay.
You want to know what it is?
Yeah. Could you explain to the public why we are giving $135,000 to California Republic of Leadership Academy?
Absolutely. So, the CRLA charter was approved by the Orange County Board of Education, and they are located within our school district boundaries. And as such, since they're in our boundaries, we are obligated to provide a pass-through of our property tax money to that charter. And we do that every, we're going to be doing that every month. And what happens is the state actually, we plug this into our LCFF calculator, and the state backfills us for all of that money that we pass through to this charter because they're a county-proofed charter. So, because of that passes through, we get the money refunded to us, if you will, through our own LCFF calculator from the state. So, it isn't a, it's got a net neutral effect on the district, but it does cause, you know, basically cash flow going out, and then we have to wait for the state to backfill us.
How long does it take for the backfill?
Well, we receive our funding every month from the state, but we get it in what's called the 995, which is we get 9% for the first two months and then 5% for the rest of the years, rest of the months throughout the year. So, it just depends on how much.
Where it falls.
Yeah. So, it averages out over the year.
It's literally just cash flow management.
It averages out over the year.
Yeah. Okay. So, to be clear, that money is not reducing our budget or taking money away from any of our students because we're getting backfilled from the state to pass that through.
Yes, correct. It's just if students are attending, then we would lose ADA from that.
Sure, if the students leave for the charter, understood.
Yes.
Are the students that are attending the charter residents in our district? So, if they weren't going to that charter and they were attending public school, they would be attending our schools?
So, according to the charter, they have about 90 students, and I believe they said 60 were from the district.
Okay. Thank you.
Thanks for explaining that. Okay, the other question I have is there are several expenses here for construction out of the, for USI out of the developer fees. And they add up to, like, Easter Day construction for $19,000, the trading center for $10,000 out of the, oh, nevermind, that one I skipped, sorry. Deluxe painting ink for $31,000, Easter Day construction, another one for $20,000.
What's your question about it?
Let me just, I'll get to the question. Let me just explain what I'm talking about first. $28,000, signature flooring for $33,000, Seiko Electric lighting for $2,000, Easter Day construction for $31,000, fence from JM Justice Fence Company for $25,000, Sierra School Equipment for $7,000, Studio Architect Plus for $9,000, and then Seiko Electric lighting for $32,000. So, my question, all of these are related to the construction of USI, is that correct?
They're related to that project, yes.
Yes. And so, that comes out at about $245,000. So, this, these are additional construction costs for USI?
I should have clarified it. It's both for OCSCS and USI.
For the campus.
It did for the campus. But it does include for both, yes.
Okay, do we know what the difference is between the two?
I don't at this moment. I mean, but we can get more detail on that.
So, and we didn't get DSA approval, correct?
Not for these items. So, these, so if you go through them, and I think when we provided the explanation, most of them are, they're painting, they're putting up signage, they're doing things that wouldn't fall under DSA requirements. The flooring is not, it's removable, which is one of the conditions for DSA.
Did we get the exemption letter for these?
No.
Okay, so these items, when you add them up, they're over what the exemption?
But it has to be for the costs associated to the things that are DSA approval requirements.
It's the type of work being done. So, it depends on not only the cost, but also the type of work.
Do we get DSA approval for anything done on any campus over $118,000?
We do a lot of work at different campuses. Exactly.
But when you add this up to what we spent at Training Lab and all of those costs.
For each project, though.
But you can't subdivide.
That was for equipment. That was for equipment.
I have a question. Why is it that you seem bent on finding a problem?
No, I'm protecting the district, and I'm protecting myself.
The district is doing things, like you're pulling up warrants about very basic expenditures that happen all over the district all the time at one location. You're not doing the same thing at every site, which is very strange to me because if you look through the warrants, there's those kind of expenses at every site across the district. So, if you're going to do this, why aren't you?
It's the complexity, and that is what.
You didn't pull, you didn't ask for DSA about the Melrose, the Family Resource Center, and they didn't pull new flooring.
I actually sent a lot of questions about DSA approval in this, and they were all...
But you're not questioning that. We just spent a bunch of money on the flooring. You're not questioning that.
And I asked on those completed projects if we got DSA approval, and it was shown that we did. So, I think that's an unfair question.
I think your line of questioning is unfair to the micromanaging of the staff that we have in place, who's doing a phenomenal job. If there was something that you found like, oh, this is a problem, yes, absolutely. But you're looking for something.
Well, I think there is a problem, especially when you go through this email chain with the district that we got on our desk. I haven't read the whole thing, but it talks about how you can't subdivide.
I'd like, I'd ask that you don't...
And I want to look more into this.
Ms. Anderson, the packet of emails you have are attorney-client privileged emails. The fact that DSA decided to waive privilege and produce this is of legal consequence to them. Please do not disclose these emails, even though the public has it. Every one of these emails has our attorney on it, and reading these emails right now is subject, the district's subject to liability. We do not waive privilege. The board never voted to waive privilege and disclose this information.
This information is public.
And this is exactly why, when we get PRAs with communications between the district and council, we do not produce it. So, the fact that this community member came in and sent us a packet of emails with our attorneys on it, attorney-client privileged materials, and cast aspersions on us not delivering these to them in a PRA is absolutely unacceptable and wrong.
They're actually public documents, so...
These are attorney-client privileged. The board never voted to waive privilege on these documents.
The DSA gave them out because they are required to by law.
That's not true.
No, emails with tau is not.
This is attorney-client privileged product of the district, and we do not disclose this on PRAs. And you're right, I'll have to look into the legality of an alternate party disclosing privileged materials, but if this were to come up in the court of law, none of this would be applicable. This is all our property. It's attorney-client privilege. We do not ever produce.
But I never saw it, even though I've asked for things.
We do not ever produce.
So, at what point do board members get information?
We do not ever, well, I will go back and see when, we can discuss that in closed session, but we do not produce attorney-client privilege, and you all know that.
I've been looking...
These are attorney-client privileged. The board never voted to disclose, to waive privilege on these documents.
The DSA gave them out because they are required to by law.
That's not true.
No, emails with tau is not.
This is attorney-client privileged product of the district. And we do not disclose this on PRAs. And you're right, I'll have to look into the legality of an alternate party disclosing privileged materials, but if this were to come up in the court of law, none of this would be applicable. This is all our property, it's attorney-client privilege, we do not ever produce-
But I never saw it, even though I've asked for things.
We do not ever produce-
So at what point do board members get information?
We do not ever, well, I will go back and see when, we can discuss that in closed session, but we do not, we do not produce attorney-client privilege and you all know that.
I've been looking for this information for months and I did a PRA and I have not-
I would advise that we agendize it for closed session. This is attorney-client privileged information.
Back to the warrants.
Yeah, we really got way off base.
Did you have another question?
No, that was it. I'm just protecting myself and the district because of the-
You keep talking about protecting us as board members. No, but we're, we're in the line of doing our duty as the board. And, and as we do our duty, there are duties that are done by those that run the district. And you keep saying that we're going to be liable for things that are listed in here. And that may be true for some things, but there are several things that you brought that aren't, that is not true. You're, I think you're placing this in a, in a very strange priority when you're talking about these things because it's only about USI and OCSCS.
So if I could just interject a minute, we've asked over a number of times about more information on USI and the OCSCS budget. It's not something that is unheard of. As board members, we should be able to do that. It's not hard to do, everything is coded. So pulling all of that information to send to us shouldn't be that difficult. That's our job. So if we're not getting that information, then we should be able to request it. And without getting it, how are we going to make decisions? So the DSA and things that have to do with facilities and getting approval is the one thing that we can be held financially liable of as a board member. The district can't protect us. They, if we have any damage, anything that happens to any students over there, they can come after us individually. So protecting our own selves is totally appropriate.
No, it's, I believe, I agree with you.
So she can ask questions.
She can ask questions.
And then if she doesn't feel, if she doesn't feel like she's getting the answers, then she should be able to ask again.
But it's not consistent, Carrie.
You say it's not consistent because these are two new projects, two new projects that she, OCSCS-
What about all the preschools?
All the preschools on there have DSA listed.
But since 2013, there were students at that PDA facility.
Yep.
And you were all on the board then for the last-
I wasn't.
Correct. And so now that we have more questions about it and we ask more about what DSA, what is happening with it, they come out and give us a report where apparently there are 10 different violations that go beyond what we were actually told initially.
I'm asking that this discussion is in closed session.
So we should have been privileged to all of the information from the DSA.
The board never waived privilege of this, of this information, it shouldn't be in the public domain right now.
It should be in the board privilege.
Like I said, I think we're, we're happy to discuss this in closed session, have our attorney in, but, but you know very well, the district does not disclose this information to the public. And the fact that the public-
We didn't, it was the DSA.
That, you know very well that the district does not disclose information with council on it. This is our property. And the fact that DSA disclosed this information, I don't believe was the correct position, but I'm not an attorney, but we will look into that. Because I don't think this is disclosable.
I also think too that everyone knows about OCSCS and then, you know, in USI and it's been up and running for, so why do we continue to pull this and talk about DSA stuff? We're not using that building, obviously. That's why the project was diverted to OCSCS, but you continue to hammer every single expenditure and then talk about DSA over and over and over again when it's up and running, people have been in the thing, it's, it's obviously moving. And that building is having the fire sprinklers put in, it's having all these things put in. So I just don't understand, is every single board meeting, is it going to be, what do you want from this?
I want it to, I want proof that it's done correctly.
Do you want OCSCS to close?
I want proof that it's done correctly, or, and I want an exemption letter. I want to be able to not worry about this and not bring this up every month.
You can't get an exemption letter for something that doesn't fall under DSA approval.
Yes, you can.
For the-
Yes, you can.
For the, for painting a wall, we're going to get, we're going to go get DSA approval for everything that we do?
It's not painting a wall, it's building you, OCSCS and USI. It is beyond building.
There was nothing built.
There was no building.
There was nothing built.
We brought equipment in.
They brought equipment in.
Okay. That's not what DSA said.
It's not what DSA says.
We should talk to-
They said that we don't, that we need-
Projects cost are required to employ design personnel.
That's the other building, Marilyn.
They haven't even been out to OCSCS.
Because there was nothing built. So you're talking about another building that is not even being used right now.
OCSCS is a school facility.
Yep.
The issue with the PDA is it was, it was categorized as a non-school commercial facility.
That was one of 10 items.
The kids should never have been in there, period. And that's what they came out and said. OCSCS is a school. It's already a school use facility. All we did is bring equipment in there. There's no DSA letter required for painting walls.
Okay.
If we want to get into that, then I believe, you know, treat every program in the district equally, right? Require this from everything and let's hire a bunch of more people and, and, and check everything and audit everything we do.
I agree with you.
But to single this out is, it's ridiculous, especially a program that's successful in helping kids. Do you want it to fail? Is that what you want?
No, I don't want to give it a stamp of approval.
Because Carrie, you've told me you want it to be successful. You just have concerns.
I think it would be great, yes, and those concerns have never been addressed.
We provided you a budget.
Not a full budget.
You've consistently asked for enrollment, we provided you enrollment.
I get an approximate.
You've said, you've said you want it to reach more kids. We've now reached hundreds of, hundreds of kids. So again, we can agendize this in the future, but we are providing the information that is necessary. But I do question these emails, being in the public domain.
I think you should look at number six from the DSA because it clearly states including demolition and equipment.
Please do not disclose this document as privileged information.
But you see, you're talking about the Casteloma address. You're not talking about the, have you been to USI?
No, I have asked and I haven't been there yet.
Okay, so you haven't been, okay, so you haven't been to USI yet. So you don't even know what facility you're talking about. They're talking about the Casteloma address was the one that needs DSA. That is stopped, as has been said tonight. It has been stopped and every, the sprinklers are going in, there's nobody allowed in the building because there shouldn't have been anybody in that building since 2013. So that's the building they're talking about, about DSA. They are not talking about OCSCS and USI because nothing was torn down.
It's a school.
There was equipment moved in and things were painted. That's it. It was already there. I mean, basically they just moved stuff in.
Have you received any letters from the DSA about OCSCS or about any projects over there in the last year? Any communication?
No, we don't have anything official from them.
What about the roofing projects, district-wide?
The roofing projects, since they were repaired, don't require DSA approval for them.
Which are million-dollar projects, by the way, and they don't require-
Which I asked at the last meeting and-
And they don't require DSA, but here we are talking about painting a wall and you want a DSA exemption letter.
Yeah. Because equipment is included in the cost.
Equipment of, what equipment? Why don't we read the emails and then have a meeting about it?
Yeah, let's all read these emails, get some more information and have a meeting about it. But I'm going to, I'm going to vote no against this just because I feel like we are-
I am as well, missing information.
All right, then let's move for a vote. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. All those opposed?
No, no.
All right. Motion carries three to two. Need a motion, please?
I'm turning pages.
I'll make a-
I'll make a motion to accept the gifts as listed, as such action is being in compliance with ED Code 41032 and direct the superintendent to send letters of appreciation.
I'll second.
I have a motion from Mrs. Anderson, I was seconded by Mr. Fraser.
Okay. I pulled this item because as I was reading through the gifts, there's many, many gifts from school PTAs for outdoor science camp. And according to our budget that we approved last September, on the Arts, Music and Constructional Block Grant, we set aside $400,000 for last year, this year, and next year to be spent on outdoor science camp. And we have spent now, last year, as was in the display, about $207,000 for it. So that means we have a surplus of 200, plus we have the 400 from this year to spend on outdoor science camp. And I just want to make sure that this money is getting spent on the kids, this is what this money was spent for. I know that we cannot continue to supplement outdoor science camp indefinitely, we just don't have those kinds of funds, but we have this block of money for, through next year and I just want to make sure it's being spent and that we have 600,000 and I think, Mrs. General, what did you say? You estimated the cost to send everyone to science camp? Was it like?
Mr. Stein estimated about 700,000.
Yeah. So we're only about 100,000-
For one year.
For one year. Right. And then we have the next year, we have the 400,000 set aside.
Through the end of next school year?
Yes, yes.
Forty-five minutes.
Yeah. So we had, like I said, we had 400 for last year, 400 for this year, and 400 for next year, and then the, the grant money runs out, we can't spend it. So I want to make sure we're spending it on the kids and that all kids are getting supplemented. I think every family in this district would appreciate a little break on that and even if they know that it's not, you know, perpetual, that this is kind of like a one-time gift, that we should, we should make sure that this money is spent accurately and how it was intended. And that's why I pulled this item.
How are we handling that?
Sure. The way that we're handling it now is that schools are fundraising and any schools who are short or any students or families who are short are being completely scholarshipd. So we're distributing the money in an equitable manner in that students who need it are getting it. So not a set amount per student, but however much each student needs to go.
Is there a reason that it was only 200,000 last year? It was just because of the way it worked?
That's all that was requested from the sites.
All that was requested.
Mm-hmm. I'm just thinking, as a mom, I remember one year when my kids went to Ruby Drive that somehow our principal wrote a grant and we all got subsidized like $100. And it was very nice and appreciated.
Sure.
And I know that we have kids that need 100%, but I think every kid could use a little break, especially since we didn't use it all last year, the chances of us using it all this year and that money is still there in the bank for this purpose. So.
Is there a question?
Well, I just want to make sure that somehow we're going to, you know, somehow we need to get together, spend it as intended.
Do we anticipate we won't be able to spend the entire amount? Is that a possibility?
We don't know. This year we might, you know, families may need 600,000.
So by the end of this school year, then we'll know exactly what's left of the 12, 12, right?
Yep.
So then, okay. So then next year, we would have a conversation about, hey, we have X amount left.
Yeah, I think the last year is probably a good way to, if we have extra money then, then we subsidize it.
Utilize it to subsidize more families, yeah.
Because this could be a tough year, there could be a lot more families that need it.
Very true, very true.
All right, let's move for a vote. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All right. Motion carries five zero, 21.3, please.
I'd like to make a motion to approve the certificated human resource report.
Second.
I have a motion by Mrs. Anderson, I was seconded by Mr. Youngblood.
I pulled this one because there was a lot of coaches for Parkview and we got a really good explanation, but I had been asked this by some community members, so I just wanted that information to go out to the public.
Sure. They're listed under Parkview because Dr. Taylor Holloway is the Assistant Director of Athletics, and so all NOEs that are submitted under Athletics are submitted under her location code. And because she is physically located at USI, it is under the Parkview location. So it is for middle school volleyball coaches for each of our middle schools, but you will notice that it will be listed under Parkview for many athletic things because Dr. Holloway will be the one approving the NOEs.
Okay, it's six coaches.
Yes, one for each middle school.
Okay.
Is there a reason why we don't sign it to each middle school or bill it toward each school so that it shows exactly what is being spent for those schools?
So they are actually billed all out of AM, IMBG, the Middle School Athletics Program. And so because she is the approver, we don't want to put that one work on the middle schools to have to submit the NOEs, but also she coordinates the program, you know, with Sarah Barton's assistance. So we can look at, I'm sure we've noted in the NOE under the description which schools each of these coaches is supporting, but that wouldn't necessarily show on this certificated personnel report. Does it artificially inflate Parkview as a result?
You mean their cost?
Mm-hmm.
It's just a different resource, so it's not part of the general fund, it's part of the restricted part of the general fund, so not really.
Okay.
Is there a reason why some coaches are paid more than others?
Some of the coaches are half stipends, some of them are on full stipends, depending on the ratio of students that they have.
Okay. So it depends on how many kids are in the program at the middle school is what they get paid?
Correct.
Correct. Okay, thank you.
All right. Call for-
One other question. Also listed is for $40,000, a stipend for Sterling Jones for a consultant for Parkview.
So he's our USI coach, as we explained to you earlier. So he does the before-school speed agility for all district kids. We're serving 120 kids each quarter. And then in addition to what he does during the day, which, so it's 10 hours before school, 10 hours during the day. So 20 hours a week.
So wouldn't we typically split a salary or do something like that or how does, why would, why were we doing a stipend instead of doing it through a salary?
It's not a stipend, that's just, that's hours. It's total hours, it's an estimated, not-
So just an hourly rate?
It's an hourly rate, yeah.
Okay.
Okay, because it looks like in the HR report, it's a stipend.
Yeah, no, it's not. It's, it's his hourly rate of, I think, $50. And that's the estimate for the whole year in hours.
Thank you for that explanation.
All right. Call for a vote. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
And I'm an aye, motion carries five zero. We'll now go to the communication and board reports. Go ahead, Carrie.
Thanks. I have been gone for the last couple of weeks, so I haven't been out doing a lot, but I did have the chance to go to the Family Resource Center ribbon cutting. It's nice to see that opening and all the work that's being done there. I'm also doing some prep work for CSBA's conference. I'll be presenting with North Orange County ROP Superintendent there for one of the presentations. And I had an opportunity to meet with a, a community member recently about school safety and he came up with a lot of great suggestions that I wanted to pass along, including, and I'll just list the five that really stood out for me. Completing a comprehensive security assessment, and I know we've done it before, but it's been a while. And, and we have a lot of new key staff members in position, so it might be a, well, it definitely is a good thing to, to look at. Also suggested an ad hoc group to review and update the district's safety plan. And the work group would include a comprehensive list of representatives. So we went through and talked about 18 different job categories or people that would be, that we should include in something like that, from all of our first responders to our admin on-site, even to nutrition services, because in, in the case of an earthquake, we need to make sure that our kids are being fed and, and any emergency like that. Additionally, safety training at each school site, because teachers don't really get a whole lot of training on it, so something, build a plan of safety training. And quarterly update meetings, or quarterly meetings with PYL key staff and our first responders on a regular basis to just continue to discuss that continuous communication with improvements. And then, and then last was a quarterly district safety committee, which would include PTA members and parents and teachers and staff from all around the district to just continue that two-way communication. It was a great conversation. I have a lot of notes that I can share. Just, you know, lots of questions came up for me as a result of just that conversation. So I appreciated that community member. Lastly, on, so I work with CalOptima often with family homelessness. And they provide a lot of Narcan and Naloxone to our shelters. And they're doing a drive-to-revive campaign to not only distribute Naloxone, but also raise awareness and provide education and its use in preventing opioid overdoses. So on Friday, they are doing a mass distribution for anyone in the county agencies and organizations. And so I've asked if they would set aside some for us. So they are, I'll be picking up 2,400 doses of Naloxone for our school district. And I'll communicate with Michelle DeHaven and make sure that she gets that so that, to help with distribution. They also have a, an online training that takes about 10 or 15 minutes. They will also provide those flyers so that they can, that can be provided with the Naloxone so that everybody can do that quick little, little training and be ready to go in case of an emergency. And I'm just thankful to CalOptima for having that in our community and being able to provide that. So thank you to them and thank you for that.
Okay. I really would like that study session next, or enclosed session to discuss these emails. I think that is very important that we discuss it and get to the bottom of all of this. Last month, I spoke out that I had not been invited to attend several events put on by the district while other board members had received invitations. And I'd really like to thank Dr. Ternus and the Executive Cabinet for rectifying this issue and making sure that I was invited and welcome to attend everything. I attended the Family Resource Opening at Melrose. And it was, this was a great first step for the students there in La Jolla that attend Melrose and Valdez. And I was so happy to see the resources there that are roughly going to serve 613 homeless students that attend these schools and 965 socially-economic disadvantaged students. And these closets were supplied with food and clothing, bedding, and it's really going to help these families tremendously. So I'm just so grateful to everybody that put in the hard work to make this happen and really look forward to seeing it benefit the students. And talking to family health matters there, it looks like their van is going to be able to come help with the medical issues in this area, starting in the first of the year. So I think that's great and I'm very excited about that. I attended the Yorba Linda First Responders Breakfast, and I'm really grateful to our first responders. We have a few in the room, so thank you guys so much. I attended the State of the City of Palencia, and it was really great to hear from our City of Palencia Mayor Yamaguchi and the path that the city is taking to improve everyone's lives here. I attended the back-to-school night at George Key, and I learned more about the new curriculum and Readopia that they have now there. And I got to see some of the students with their reading book, not the students, but their reading books of Treasure Island. And I was so impressed by these books and that the teacher had put a lot of extra work into these books, putting key things and prompts into it to specialize it for each one of their students. And it's just such a, was just such an obvious show of the love and the care that our teachers put into their students. I attended the grand opening of the Coffee Cart at George Key. And it was just really fun to see the students and see them engaging. And I had a lovely pumpkin hot chocolate there. And they had it set up by the garden with tables. And it was just so inviting and relaxing, and I loved every minute of it. I attended the El Dorado Lights last night. It's been well documented tonight. And I appreciate the invitation. And it was really fun to see the football players practicing under the lights. And actually, those lights are quite impressive because there's very little spillage. And I was happily surprised about that. And I really hope the district can reach out to our neighbors and mitigate any other light spillage that might be going into these homes. And I do believe in us being good neighbors. This month is Breast Cancer Awareness Month. As many of you know, I went through breast cancer last year. And I want to do a shout-out to my fellow survivors and my friends who are current warriors. I have a friend who's having her last radiation treatment tomorrow. And I am so excited for her to be on the other side of breast cancer. And her story is similar to mine, and it wasn't too severe due to early detection. So here is your annual friendly reminder to get your mammograms or other breast cancer prevention checkups annually and/or sooner if a doctor recommends. Early detection is crucial for survival and for the best outcomes. And so I'd like to thank Mr. Youngblood. He wore his pink ribbon tonight. And I hope that you join me in wearing pink to support breast cancer awareness and get those checkups and those currently fighting breast cancer to celebrate, help those that are currently fighting breast cancer and just celebrate with breast cancer survivors everywhere. Thank you.
All right, good evening, everyone. Board report starts as being very excited about all the new happenings in our district. That includes the OCSCS. That also includes, which I was very pleased to hear about, math and reading achievements. That's probably one of the biggest things for me, at least. That was one of the reasons in which, you know, the work in which we do as a board, if we can improve kids in those areas, then we're doing good things. Because if we, just our little area can, you know, make a bigger difference than other areas, maybe the whole state can come up as far as their reading and math scores. So that's, that's the hope. That's the wish. Also excited about the increase in enrollment. Love the fact that we're, we're doing some pretty amazing things, innovative, and that is drawing more, more kids, more families back into our district. I would love to continue that, love to see, see that continue to happen. So also, the El Dorado Lights, yay! So only took 30 years, but I have to commend, this board worked hard on getting these lights approved. And that includes everyone on the board, guys, so not just, just a few. The board as a whole, we worked on getting this together. So, so I do appreciate that. Carrie, I think we probably spoke with the same guy regarding the safety deal, because you stole my thunder altogether. But that guy was amazing, amazing info. And, you know, one of the things that realize, especially month of October, is also Fire Safety Month. So you'll see a lot of our schools, they're, they'll be receiving information, talking about fire safety and all the stop, drop, and roll and all the, all the good things that go with replacing batteries and fire, and fire detectors, smoke detectors. So one of the things we have a tendency forget is that the, the elementaries and the preschools and so forth, they are also soft targets. They are also places in which bad things can happen. And I don't necessarily mean just like active shooters or whatnot, but any, any type of crisis, whether, whether it's, you know, fire, medical emergencies, earthquake-type things. And I agree with the, the community member and Ms. Buck when I say that we have to get our staff involved. Communication is the number-one failure when we come, go into these drills and so forth. And I know most of you guys, probably when you were growing up, we used to have the, the earthquake drills and we'd duck underneath the desk or we'd have the fire drills and they would direct us out to one particular area where we're all supposed to meet and so forth. Well, this community member made it clear that, you know what, we need to also make sure that staff knows alternatives. We'd like to say that everything goes according to plan, but it doesn't. There's always, you know, some sort of, you know, foul job that will cause us to, you know, have to change those plans. So implement these types of, of things. You know, if it's a certain direction that we normally go in filing the students out, well, then let's make that access, you know, inaccessible that we have to reroute, you know, go a different way. We have to think according to what that emergency might entail. So I'm hoping more staff development and training on that. I think it would be a great thing. So yes, definitely, safety, safety is number one. So let's, let's keep looking at those things. Also, Ms. Anderson mentioned, you know, this is a month for breast cancer awareness. And, you know, unfortunately, or fortunately, however you want to look at it, breast cancer can hit anyone, including men as well. So guys, don't, don't, don't think that you're untouchable because we're not. So breast cancer awareness, huge. A lot of departments are, are backing these types of programs. And this month is the, the time to go get your checkups, so. Last but not least, I want to put out your guys' thoughts and prayers for things that are happening on the East Coast. Hurricane Helen has decimated six of our states there. We've got over 200 dead with thousands that's still unaccounted for. Know that we have teams that are even heading from Southern California, heading that direction to help out. Hurricane Helen was a Category 4 storm. It's, that's a powerful storm. That's the same as Katrina was. But building up right now is Hurricane Milton that's in our Gulf Coast that has got itself in line for Florida and those coastal towns, Mississippi and such. And it is a Category 5 hurricane. So please, keep that, keep that in mind tonight as we're, we're snuggling safe in our bed, watching TV, that there are families that are in dire need. And, you know, just keep in mind our prayers. So that is the end of my report. Thank you.
Well, I just have to say that when you sit here and you watch the State of the District presentation, which was phenomenally created, by the way, thank you very much for that. It's like there's two different school districts when you listen to some of the public comment and you look online. It's very strange. It really is. And I just want to say, I, I don't know how you can look at the things that are happening in this district. And yes, there's disagreements. Yes, there's things that others would do differently and maybe have a different program here, a different program there. But the results that we're getting in this district, increased enrollment, you can argue about whether you think that's good enrollment increase or not. Either way, it's enrollment increase. There's so many programs that are helping our students. The things that are happening in this district are envied by several other districts across the state. And I don't know whether it's national or not, but I think it's potentially that. So I just like to always back up when you get involved with the emotional part of what either somebody affected you or something that you're really irritated about that you had an experience with. If you back up and think, well, let's look at the whole picture. Things are really, really great here. They really are. I just wanted to start with that. And then this, this last month, I was able to attend a few different things. Several of them were mentioned up here already. I was at the Yorba Linda First Responders Breakfast. Thank you so much for those in emergency services. And again, the people on the Gulf Coast and the things that are happening there, we, I don't know where we would be without people like you and you and you that are, that are there to keep us safe in times of need. I think it's, it's interesting when you see the things happening that are over there. We'd have to deal with that. Like Sean said, we're going to be, we're going to be fine tonight when we get home. But there are people that, like I have family that have had to flee the part of Florida that's about to be hit. It's, it put things, it put things in perspective. And when we see the things like that happen, we really need to, to take a look at ourselves and how we can actually make a true difference and impact people around us and across the country. And any way that you can be involved in that, please get involved, whether you can give money or if you can give supplies or however you can get involved, please do something to get involved. I was able to attend the Secondary Community Advisory Committee on Zoom with Dr. Ternus and several community members. And there was lots of presentations. I got a preview of these numbers. You guys, when, when you look at what the purpose is of education, it's to increase scores, right? That's, it's math, reading, all of this stuff that we really need to focus on as opposed to all the things that are, that are being talked about. We've increased scores. We have evidence that things are moving in the right direction. It's just phenomenal to hear these other, these, these site leaders talk and even just the camaraderie about, between Kramer and Tuffrey. They were talking back and forth about their, their school rivalries. It's just, they're, they're friends and they're having fun. But there is a, really a feeling of family that, that you get at a district specifically like this that I've experienced that you, I'm assuming you probably don't get a lot of places. And then in, in addition to that, I was at the El Dorado Field Lighting, which Marilyn said, it, those lights are impressive. And you flick a button and they go on. I don't know if any of you were at the Esperanza Football Game two weeks ago where the lights went out in the fourth quarter? It took 20 minutes for them to come back on. That was crazy. The lights the other night, they just flipped a switch and they're on full bright. It's, they're phenomenal. And they're LED, they're pointed, they're everything that we could possibly do to not affect the neighbors the way that we could and still serve our students. I think we did a phenomenal job of getting that done. And then finally, I don't know if you've ever been to a basketball or volleyball game at Valencia, but there's, there's the new gym and then there's what I call the classic gym. Some people call it the old gym, I call it the classic gym. It's like Hoosiers. You've got elevated stands on, on one side. Anyways, I only bring that up because I had to go to a basketball game there. And typically, that's the place when it's hot outside, you don't want to go because it's not ventilated, it's, there's just one big fan in the corner and you hope that you're sitting in front of it. Well, now there's air conditioning. And I have never been more comfortable in the Valencia Classic Gym as I was last night watching the basketball game. I almost stayed for two. I didn't, but, because we were the last game. Anyways, the things that are happening are making a difference for our students. They're making a difference for our educators, and they're making a difference for our community. So I am just really proud of the things that are happening. And regardless of whether you agree or disagree, I had a conversation with a gentleman that we don't agree on a lot of things, but we both agree that there are things that are happening that we do agree on that are making a difference for our students and our community. And I just really appreciate everything going on at the district.
All right. I also attended the Yorba Linda First Responder Breakfast. Enjoyed attending that. I attended it with Sean and Marilyn and Dr. Ternus. We had a good time. Like I've been, I was there for the blackout at Esperanza, and it was quite something. And to get the lights back on, it was, it took 20 minutes. And so last night, when El Dorado turned on their lights and like they just went off and on, like you were flipping a switch, that was pretty incredible. So obviously, I was at, they're at the El Dorado Lights Ceremony last night. Went to the Yorba Linda Water Polo Games. I'm sure everyone was shocked. But I did also attend the Valencia and Yorba Linda Water Polo Game. When I was at Valencia's pool deck, I did notice that they, their scoreboard does not work. Like you can't tell what quarter you're in. You can't, you know, you can't tell a lot. You're kind of guessing, like what, is this the quarter? Like, is that the score? And so I would say that Valencia desperately needs a new scoreboard for their pool deck. And I know that they've said that that's been an ask for, you know, years, but it seems like people just don't want to ask the question, like, can we get a new scoreboard? Can we get a new this? They're like, oh, well, I just asked for this. And I said, well, just ask for it all. I mean, the worst that can happen is no or maybe next year, but they really desperately do need a scoreboard. A friend of mine, before the board meeting, she texted me and she said that, a name we're all familiar with, Dana Brown, she's at Fullerton School District, and they are trying to replicate now USI as well. And so I thought it was kind of strange online. We have people, you know, doing these weird interviews that are talking about, you know, that USI is a poorly thought-out project. And they're saying that our $1.2 million project is actually $3.8 million, but nobody can find where any of that was approved. We haven't spent $3.8 million. We've spent the 1.2. They're saying, as you said last night, AP, or AP classes are being removed. And as we heard tonight, our AP scores are up and we're actually expanding on our AP classes. So I think whatever is going on and whatever misinformation that people are giving out to the community, it's just wrong. I mean, like, you know, you're at soccer games or you're at, what was that? It was a football game and somebody said, why are you guys getting rid of AP classes? And I said, what are you even talking about? And they said, oh, such and such said, we're getting rid of AP classes. So just know if you hear some- So just know if you hear something, AP classes are not being removed, they're actually expanding. A couple other things that was happening, people seem to be very interested in my police shooting, and they seem to want to be talking about it online and saying false things, a lot of libel going on. And so if you guys want to talk about it, then, you know, we can, we can talk about it. Obviously, I was cleared by the district attorney's office, and was I fired from my job? No. And so anybody who wants to go online and talk about it, just know that you come off as not supporting or backing the blue, and you don't support our officers then, because when we're out there protecting people, and things happen in the line of duty, and we have to make split decisions, do we make the right decision? And then we have our little social media warriors going online, talking about the shooting, and then trying to say people have been fired for the incident, when there's clearly a district attorney's letter right there that says we were cleared. And so just know that, there's a lot of, you know, your talk online, you know, while you're trying to hit me, I know the truth, all you have to do is pull up the district attorney letter, that shows the truth. And so I don't really know, it's kind of disrespectful to law enforcement in general, and, you know, everybody's out there protecting, but then, you know, how does that make officers feel when they go home at night, or have to pull the trigger, or have to do something, you know? And to know that, that there's people on social media who are just completely disrespectful as everyone's sleeping at home at night. We're out patrolling, and we're all having to make the hard decisions, and yet you have somebody 12 years later going online and trying to just throw shade my way. So I stand by my actions, obviously, the district attorney stood by my actions, I'm sure my kids are very happy that I'm still here today. So if anybody would like to talk about my shooting, why don't you come, and we'll sit down for coffee face-to-face, and you can stop trying to throw shade on social media where my kids and my family and all these people can see it. Why don't we actually have a conversation? I also, too, there was some other stuff that I just want to go through with real quick, because it's just more information, and we know that, we know the site, we don't even need to, to give the site any credibility or even say their name. But, real quick, it's confirmed that in 2009, middle school sports was not, was removed for budget cuts, and we brought it back in 2021. That's confirmed. I mean, I just need, correct? Correct? Yeah. It was, it was in 2009 that, that it was mentioned, and so what people are saying is that there's been middle school sports this entire time. The one middle school sport we had was, we had the Reach Foundation Track Meet. And so in 2021, we did bring back the middle school sports, and we've been expanding on the middle school sports ever since. Somebody had said, the Nixon Library has been providing curriculum to our middle schools since their kids, who are now in their 30s, were attending Travis Ranch, and so they're saying that we are not doing a Nixon Library. So would you just expand on that, so people actually know that, that there's been no Nixon Library curriculum in our schools, and that what we're doing, if you could just explain what we're doing?
Yeah, so we're developing the Honor Civics course with the Nixon Library. It's a new course, and it's going to be amazing, and our kids will go there next year, from Yorba Linda High School. And then we'll expand it to all our schools, and it's a brand-new course, and it's in partnership with the library, and they're building a whole education wing, and we're going to bring civics education back to, to our kids.
And we also have the five high school interns internships?
And we had five high school interns for the first time ever at the library last summer.
And then Renee, can you not, right now, please? Renee, we have a, we created that State of California, the Alternative Diploma Pathway for special education students. Did we create that? I understand the State of California may have something like that, but we created our own pathway for diplomas, correct?
We have created our own and made it tailored and personalized, but the, the state had encouraged the districts to, to, to have an alternative diploma, but we actually grew ours more.
Okay, thank you. That was something else that they were saying that we were lying about, and that it was the State of California's we were using, and it wasn't tailored to our own school district, and that we'd always had it. The other school, the other thing was, I guess, I guess more of this was just more trash talk than anything. Yeah, there was declining enrollment. Can we talk about the preschools and declining enrollment?
Yeah, preschool has expanded three months this year, just like everywhere else, where districts are declining. So to say we're increasing because of the state expanded, we've, they've expanded three months of enrollment for each of the last four years. This year's no, no different. The last three years, we declined. They expanded TK enrollment for three months, starting in '21, we declined 400 kids. '22, we declined 400 kids. '23, we declined 400 kids. '24, we increased. So absolutely ridiculous assertion, and like I said, every other district around, they're declining.
Okay. Okay, and so another thing, too, and I think we just need to, to talk about it, is there's some parents who are obviously very upset about some of the things that, you know, the talk about the libraries, you know, and the book bans and stuff, and so right now, SB1435 has been brought forward by Ochoa Ba, and it's requiring the governing board of a school district to exclude from schools and school libraries serving pupils in preschool through grade eight all books, publications, or papers that contain obscene matter. The CTA is opposing this bill, so they're opposing that, they want K-8, I guess, they want it in libraries or what, and so people are asking me these questions. I'm not the person to ask about the CTA or the union, or why they're opposing this bill. So I suggest that you email the APLA president and ask for clarification as to why they are opposing this bill. I also, too, there's another bill talking about school safety, and I, I didn't meet this person in person, but they were asking, why are we not putting armed security guards on all of our campuses? Well, there is a bill that is up in Sacramento, and our teachers' union, CTA, is opposing that bill as well. So that's another question to ask, about where can we meet in the middle to start to do school security and to be able to have armed people on our campuses? And so those are questions that you're asking us, but I can't give you that answer, because I think having armed security on all of our campuses is a phenomenal idea, but I don't know why the teachers' union, the CTA, is opposing this idea for the safety of our kids. And I'm glad we were able to talk about the Outdoor Science Camp, I'm glad you brought that up, because people were asking about the Outdoor Science Camp stuff, and I think that that was the only, that was the only thing that, the main things that people were asking me questions about, as far as like, you know, what the union was opposing, or what they were promoting, or whatever. So, one question, there was also something that was said yesterday in an interview, that we don't do audits. We do audits every single year. And so to come in and say that all of a sudden, we're going to start doing audits every year is ridiculous, because we do audits every year.
Yes, we're required to by law.
Right, okay. All right, well, I think that that was it, that was the three or four main questions, and we will see everybody back here on November 19th for our next board meeting. 19th. All right, I need a...
I'll make a motion to adjourn.
I'll second.
All right, I have a motion from Mr. Frazier, I have a second from Mrs. Anderson, all those in favor.
Aye.